Turn my camera so you can see the flag here and we'll all rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Captain McNally, nice to have you with us this evening in lieu of Chief Lynch.
I'm substituting tonight.
I would ask this council if when we get to the consent agenda, I want to pull two items. So Madam Clerk.
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
So if I may, if I could ask this council to pull, make a motion, please, for HH nine and DD one. DD one, I'd like to move to the beginning of our meeting as in right now, actually, after we, I'll, I take that back right after we vote on the the previous minutes and you'll know why in a moment. A motion of that effect?
I'll move.
Thank you. So I'm going to take that as a motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to move HH nine or pull HH nine and move DD one to the beginning of our meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mary? I, I heard a yes from Mary. Tony?
I.
Tim?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
I also vote I. Motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we're going to go to the minutes and then we'll go to that DD one.
Okay, sounds great. So the first item of business is A1, and this is the submission admission submission of minutes for the town council meeting of January 20th, 2021.
Motion to approve the previous minutes?
This second, Tony?
Motion made by Tim to approve, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
Hi.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I. Motion carries.
Do you want to move to the, those items now or later?
We're going to go if, so we'll go to DD one and we'll have HH nine at the end.
At the end, okay.
Yes, please.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. This is item B1 and this is for Brick LLC and this is Jordan Sawyer. And this is a request for a Class BV liquor license. I just want to remind the council members that this is subject to the approval of the ordinance C1 on tonight's agenda.
So this, as the clerk rightly pointed out, is a public hearing to add a full BV or full liquor license, if you will. So I'm going to open up this public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? And actually, I'm going to stop for just a moment. Chris Vitale, if you could please remind the participants of the meeting how to raise their hand is because this is a public hearing.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So if you're an attendee and you're using the Zoom app, you can find the raise hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom video screen. There should be a little emoji icon that's there. And then if you're calling in by phone, because I did see that we have a few call-in listeners, you can use the raise hand feature by pressing star nine on your keypad.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so as I said, we opened the public hearing. So is there anyone here to speak in favor? We have one hand raised. I'm going to go to that attendant. I'm not surprised. It's the petitioner, Jordan Sawyer. Jordan, if you, Chris, if you could unmute Jordan, and Jordan, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, Jordan Sawyer, 45 Kikamiut Avenue, Bristol. I'm the owner of Brick Pizza Company, Brick LLC, here to, on behalf of the, my company for a full BV license. Just want to thank you, thank the town council and everyone for taking the time to listen and for giving me the opportunity. I think, like I stated in past meetings, that Brick Pizza Company is a full-service restaurant that is offering farm-to-table offerings, artisan brick oven pizza with a very similar menu to what I have at the Oyster Bar, but rather than being a seafood-focused, it would be much more focused on land offerings. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the company.
So I, this is a public hearing, so we will refrain from, you know, particular whether you are for or against as a council, but is there any direct questions for Jordan? Because Jordan is the applicant at the moment. Okay, I don't hear any. Okay, so Jordan, we'll come back to you. Do you have any, anything else that you wanted to add?
I think I stated everything in the last meeting and happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? As we always say, we have a hand raised. Okay, so I am, Chris, if you could unmute Elizabeth, that's all I can see at the moment. Elizabeth, it's Elizabeth Brito. Betty, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
I'm using Betty's computer. This is Joe Brito Jr. My computer had a hiccup, so the purpose of me calling.
Sound well right now? I maybe, maybe a COVID test, so.
This is Joe Brito Jr., 161 Papa Squash Road, Bristol, Rhode Island. I am also the landowner of 500 Wood Street where Jordan is going to be going. I'm speaking for Jordan, being able to get this application through. Jordan's Brick Oven Eatery is going to be one of the anchors of the complex of 500 Wood Street. He has spent a considerable amount of time and energy researching his menu of his establishment. As we all know, he has been a very rare under the name of the Bristol Oyster Bar. And as such, I think that he would be a major contributor to the downtown area and 500 Wood Street. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions of May?
Counsel?
No, but I do have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please. Go ahead, Tony.
No, I certainly like the way things are coming about and the improvements that are already taking place there. Certainly is a great, a great task and certainly looking forward to see the finished product.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, so I'm going to ask one more time. Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? And I'm going to give it just an extra couple of moments here because Zoom can be clunky. Okay, is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Again, we'll just give it an extra count here. Okay, hearing none. What's this council's pleasure?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
I also vote I. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is item C1, and this is for ordinance 2021-01. And this is the second reading for adoption to increase the number of BV licenses from 31 to 32.
What's this council's pleasure?
Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the second reading for adoption to increase the BV licenses from 31 to 32.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve ordinance 2021-01, as already stated. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim? Aaron?
I.
I also vote I. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is item C2, and this is for ordinance number 2021-02. And this is for parking prohibited at all times on Dyer Street, and this is first reading.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
Hi.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I. Motion carries.
The next item of business is D1, and this is for Brick LLC, Jordan Sawyer, and this is a request for the BV liquor license.
So I'm going to take a moment just to share with the public. You've heard a couple of, of references to this license. So what happened was we had the public hearing to talk about a specific license for brick oven pizza. Then you heard an ordinance passed to allow an additional license. Now that one exists, it is now requested of Jordan, or I should say brick oven pizza by Jordan, to get that license that was just created moments ago. What's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Hi, Mary.
I heard, go ahead, Mary.
I, I move that we grant the, the license.
I second that based on all the recommendations that are provided to us.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to grant that BV license that we just created. I'd like to take a moment and say that I think we all agree that this is the first of many positive steps in that area, on that property, in the surrounding area. There are some wonderful businesses there already. This is an enhancement to what is already there. This is an enhancement to the neighborhoods. There is so much work being done. Rock Street, Shaw's Lane, all of that. And quite honestly, it's well overdue and it's wonderful that it's getting done, not only for those neighbors, most specifically for them and those businesses, but for all Bristolians. I think this is just outstanding. So is there any other conversation or dialogue? Hearing none. Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
Hi.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item for business is D2, and this is Jordan Sawyer. And this is for the Brick Pizza Company request for a vitaling license.
Chairman, I make the motion to approve the vitaling license for Jordan Sawyer doing business as Brick Pizza Company.
Mr. Chairman, second that.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve the vitaling license. This feels like the Jordan show right now. Is there any other discussion?
I looked at the menu. It looked great and coming down from those scallops, Jordan.
I agree. I think if you drive by there, and I know a lot of have the new roof going on, it's just, I, I don't think we can say this enough, is that that area being improved, there's going to be wonderful positive consequences from it. So, and not only for Jordan, but all surrounding. So I think it's just wonderful.
Overdue is right, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim? Aaron?
I.
I also vote I. Motion carries. Congratulations, Jordan, and good luck.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item of business is D3, and we have Denise Ashola for the Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church requesting for a one-day dancing and entertainment license. This is a nonprofit for the annual feast on July 16th through the 18th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve it based on the recommendations and obviously working with the recreation director since it's in the town common and consider all the stipulations.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Mr. Solicitor, just a quick question. Is there anything that we need to add to these? And I think we're all in agreement that we want this to happen in regards to COVID. Is, should be there any, should there be any disclaimers or, or, you know, for example, you know, as the world changes and it opens up, do we need to talk about that at all in approvals?
I, I, I think as long as those who are seeking these licenses or as long as those who are seeking the licenses are aware of the fact that they have to be in compliance with both state and town laws regarding to COVID, you're all set. I think that's a given because there's an executive order that's in place, and that executive order directs how everyone in the town, whether it's a group, an activity, or an individual relates to COVID. So I, the short answer is no, I don't think you have to do that.
I know it's the hope of all of us on this meeting that there is nothing in the way of the success here because if this is possible, there are so many other things that are possible. So excellent. Okay, so Tony, you made the motion. I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I did.
Mary, Mary seconded it. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
Hi.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is item F1, and this is a petition from Eleanor C. and James B. Lawton of 70 King Philip Avenue requesting for no parking on the west side of King Philip Avenue from Dyer Street North to Pole 10, and this is continued from January 20th.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I can see that Eleanor Lawton is on the call. So Chris, if you could unmute and, and I'm not sure if it's Eleanor or both Eleanor and James, if you could state your full name and address for the record, you are muted at the moment. There you go.
Good evening. It's just James. Eleanor is with me. Can you see me? No, you can't see me.
We can't see you. Chris, is it possible to add video?
You can hear me.
We can. If you just, if you could just give it just a moment. I think Chris has given you that capability. Bear with us just one moment. And there you are. Now we can see you. You just need to unmute.
There we go.
There you go. So if you could state your full name and address for the record?
It's James B. Lawton and Eleanor C. Lawton of 70 King Philip Avenue, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, all of you, for considering our petition. We've applied for this simply for safety reasons. Safety, safety, safety is where we've been kind of postured. Safety for our neighbors, they being Patty Sylvia and her husband Tomas. Tomas has a lifelong acute heart condition. And we feel it's imperative that if rescue services are required, you know, at their five Dyer Street for him, that the rescue vehicle, that the, you know, the rescue vehicle in response can reach that house uninhibited. That's the reason for, that's the top reason. Safety for the town vehicles and the employees who drive, you know, drive and deliver the services to our neighborhoods, that being, you know, fire, you know, the anomalous fire, rescue trash, recycle, snow plowing, sanders, and et cetera. They need to have the ability to function uninhibited. Safety for also the commercial vehicles and those drivers, you know, that access the streets around here in this area. The UPS, FedEx, oil, propane, and just this past week, we've learned through a chance encounter with the postmaster that he has some very serious safety issues with our neighborhood that we think might be good to bring to your attention and have someone maybe seek him out. Safety also for the school bus drivers and the students that are on a pickup and drop off here on King Phil, King Philip Avenue, which has been a very longstanding school route for, you know, my wife's been here 52 years. I've been here 45. I know that the Sylvia family, they've had 70, almost 75 years up on Dyer. And lastly, we'd like to, you know, make a note outside of the safety issue that most of the residents here in the neighborhood are who park cosed overnight are averaging somewhere with two to three vehicles per house with, you know, intermittent, obviously, you know, you know, daily day guests and overnight guests. As far as the relativity of the fact that what we're asking to have a no parking zone is in front of two houses that are way above that average, that seven to nine vehicles per house, and that pretty much is on a nightly basis well back, going back a year anyways. So that's kind of the whole recap of why we're looking to do this. You know, things have changed dramatically over the number of years we've been here, and that kind of recaps it. So we really appreciate you and we want to thank you for your attention and the consideration on this. And I don't know if maybe you have any questions of us.
Does this council have any questions? I was going to ask the Captain McNally to, I know that we have a recommendation from the police department to deny and, but I don't, I would ask that the captain speak to that in a moment. Before I ask the captain to do that, was there any questions of the petitioner from the council? Okay, well, let me just make sure. Okay, so Captain McNally, I recall, and I think most of us, if not all of it, most of us were here when we passed an ordinance for no parking, and I know you referenced that in your recommendation. This was back in 2017, 2018, if I'm remembering it correctly. Could you speak to the police department's position on this and why you are recommending that we deny?
So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The study that was done back in 2017 by Lieutenant Wasney was quite comprehensive. And, you know, there was, it was a lot of input from the neighborhood, from the fire and rescue personnel from the Department of Public Works, from the school bus companies and everybody that, that we could kind of reach out to. And based on that extensive, it was a quite comprehensive study. The recommendation was to post no parking from Dyer to Sunrise on the west side. Obviously, that was taken into consideration and the petition was granted. Also, from Sunrise North to Narrows on the west side is no parking currently. We kind of drilled down into the numbers based on this petition and focused on where the actual signage would be posted. We used our own database. We, we looked at calls for service. We looked at, you know, complaints that we had received for no parking, and surprisingly, the numbers, they just don't add up to what we would consider posting a no parking sign in that particular area. We just, the numbers don't support that. The fire chief again was, we reached out to the fire chief and the fire chief explained that he hasn't had one complaint from one rescue driver. He hasn't had a complaint from fire personnel. We also reached out to Director Perella from the Department of Public Works, who also said the same. At this point, that particular section of road that they're asking for no parking is somewhat wider than the rest of the, the area. So we could kind of see how the petition in 2017 was granted from Dyer to Sunrise. In this particular area, without getting too technical, the measurements don't, it's, 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 there's a considerable amount of space there. And I walked this, you know, twice this week and once last week with Chief Lynch and Lieutenant Wasney. And, you know, I just posting the no parking there doesn't really, it's going to create other problems in other areas of the neighborhood, so to speak, because you're going to push people who are looking to park in that area up into the side streets where there's already been restricted parking. Dyer in particular with, where we granted the, the no parking there. I mean, those streets are narrow. There's just, just the way it is, the way it was constructed. So based on, based on the numbers, you know, the police department is not in support of posting no parking there.
Thank you, Captain. I asked for that directly from you, and typically there isn't as much dialogue on this, but I, I did speak with the chief and also with you, Captain, separately. And I know that there was a lot of efforts done into looking at this and seeing if there was validity in it, I guess, you know, or, or the need is probably a better way to put that. Validity is too strong. So the need. But I'd like to open up to my colleagues, your thoughts on it, and what next actions you'd like to take.
Chairman, I just had one question. Captain McNally, thank you for your analysis. I had a question in regards to the health, the health issue and getting rescue in. There was a concern there. Is there, is there two ways in Dyer in regards to getting a rescue in there? And I was just curious if that was, you could just speak to that.
There is access to Dyer from King Philip and also Cockshell Road where there was no, no parking was posted. So that would help alleviate that issue. You know, I've, I've, I've been with the department in my 24th year and, and, you know, our fire department rescue people are second to none. I can vouch for them. If there's an issue somewhere, they're going to get there. We've never had that, that problem to my knowledge. So it just, it just, you know, it doesn't seem to warrant the no parking at this point.
Mary?
Yes, a quick question. I believe, I may be mistaken, but I believe there's some houses that are rented out by students in that area, and I was wondering when you went down there to check if the students were back, you know, or if we were looking at it at times when, you know, it's been kind of like a tricky year when students have been in and out of, of, of school or they're working remotely, maybe living at home.
There, there were, there were out-of-state plates in the driveway. I do have pictures. We did take pictures. I could refer back to the pictures. I'm not exactly sure how many there were. But, um, you know, as far as we know, they are, they are there and they are living there, and nobody has left.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Tony. No, I just have an observation. I was a little surprised to hear that the, the post office or the postmasters having an issue with access there when our vehicles, the, the fire, I mean, fire and rescue as well as trash, you know, if they can get our large vehicles through, I'm a little surprised to hear about the postmaster, but that's somewhat irrelevant.
Okay.
We have not had a complaint from the, from the postal service at all regarding that area to this point. So maybe it was a side conversation between Mr. Lawton and, and somebody I, but as, as of this point, we have not received any complaints whatsoever from them.
Thank you, Captain.
Any other conversation from the council or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lay, and I just want to thank Captain for what he's told us today about the situation over there. It's, it reminds me of another time where we had an issue like this pop up. I think it was over on Milford Road or something like that where just a tremendous amount of research was poured into looking into some of these situations so that we could have all the information that we meet, need to make the right decision. So I want to thank you and Captain Lynch and everybody else for all the hard work that they've done on this.
Thank you.
Okay, what's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, based on the recommendation provided to us, I agree that we should deny it.
Is there a second?
But I just wanted to point out that, that one of the neighbors has their hand up. I don't know if you saw that.
No, I didn't. Thank you for pointing that out, Mary. Is that Patricia? Actually, there's only one person with their hand up. So that's Patricia Sylvia. So Chris, if you could allow Patricia to speak. Patricia, if you could unmute and state your full name and address for the record. Actually, you know what? If you could hold just one moment. Mary, did you second because we had a motion on the floor? Did it, did I hear?
Wanted to make sure that you saw that.
Okay, so before I.
Seconded for discussion, yeah.
Thank you. So we have a motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary for discussion. Patricia, if you could state your full name and address for the record. Thank you. So we have a motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary for discussion. Patricia, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you for, um, allowing us to speak on this issue. Um, I, I just wanted to say that, um,
If I may, if you could, if you could just state your full name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Patricia Sylvia, five Dire Street, Bristol, Rhode Island. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, of course, but also, um, you know, Tomas and I have lived here for, uh, twenty years. And someone in my, in my family has lived here since, uh, nineteen fifty-one. And, um, it's, I heard the captain talk about twenty seventeen. But a lot has changed since twenty seventeen. Um, it's probably been the last two years where it's gotten, um, uh, the most concerning because both of these homes, seventy-one and seventy-three, used to, um, um, have families which had two or three cars, um, at the most. And, and now there's uh, five cars for each home. And, um, when there's guests and it just really crowds up that whole corner on King Philip, all the way around it up Dire. Um, and I too am concerned, um, like where would those cars go, you know? Um, because I do live on one of those, you know, on Dire, which is really small. But, um, really, it's, it's been the last couple of years where, um, the, the, just the volume has gotten a little crazy. Um, and the Narrows is narrow. Um, so yeah, like, like Jim and Ellie. Um, my, my concern has been safety, uh, for Tomas, um, or, or even the standishes across the street if we needed an ambulance. But I, I just wanted to say that and, uh, just thank you for, for your time and, um, and for all the support that we have gotten from the town.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council?
I just have one quick comment and that is, I think that this is something that you know, needs to be monitored. Um, I was thinking the same thing in terms of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen study, which was very comprehensive, but you know, it doesn't take a lot and that particularly in, in any neighborhood, particularly in that neighborhood. Uh, for, you know, if a house goes to like student housing, um, where there are five, six cars in one place. So I do think this warrants, um, even if it's denied now, it warrants the police to be on top of that to look at that. And to make sure that, you know, um, periodically maybe report to us or check in with the neighbors because it doesn't take, you know, and what if another house goes in this direction, uh, down there? And I think that that is, uh, the problem. I mean, we have it, the same issue downtown and in downtown Bristol. Um, where the streets are much wider and the parking, you know, it doesn't take much. And if, and if anybody starts having vehicles that are you know, like pickup trucks or, um, work vans or anything else that even adds to it even, even more so.
Thank you, Mary. It's a great point. And I think that, that, uh, I think the captain would agree that, that enforcement there would be, or anywhere. But, but since we're talking about that specific area, force enforcement is key. And, um, periodic, uh, updates when appropriate, if there's, if there's changes there, I know that, uh, it would be important that this council knows that, um, significant changes or semi-significant changes. So we can make adjustments accordingly if necessary. I agree.
We keep our finger on the pulse.
Thank you, Captain.
And to Mary's point, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, Captain McNally, you, you encourage the residents as a processing uh, with to, to reach out, uh, to the police department when they do see those situations?
Absolutely. Um, uh, as a matter of fact, just to, I do have a sheet in front of me from uh, from twenty eighteen, when the ordinance was, was enacted until now, or actually until the seventeenth of this month. Um, self-initiated calls that, that we as a police department were driving by and maybe witnessed something have issued eight summonses. Um, we've asked two people, uh, to move vehicles. And we wrote three left wheels to curb and, you know, so we are, we are initiating activity down there. We do. It is a regular part of our patrol, uh, area because we patrol the Narrows and we patrol Mount Hill Boat Ramp. So it is a cut through for us. So we are by there several times a day. Um, and, and complaint wise, uh, where we actually received a call or through tip four one one, we received nine complaints and we wrote five summonses. Um, so we are, we are on it. Um, and we do encourage the residents down there. If there is an issue or there's a party uh, to give us a call and we're going to come down and we're going to investigate it and we'll enforce when we have to, um, and when necessary. So absolutely.
And just to take a moment to give kudos to the police department is that the residents that I've spoken with, uh, living in that vicinity have nothing but positive comments about the police department and their willingness to improve the situation, which is unfortunately, it's not a surprise to me. You guys do a good job.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we had a motion made by Tony, seconded, um, by Mary, um, to deny based off the recommendation from the police department. Okay, um, Mary? So it's denial, so I, right? If that's, okay. Uh, Tony?
I.
Tim? Aaron?
I.
I also vote I, motion carries to deny. Thank you to, um, uh, first to the petitioner. We appreciate you uh, looking into this and thank you to the police department for the efforts that you put in to give us the recommendation.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is item F two, and this is from Reverend uh, Henry Zeno, the pastor of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church. Requesting for the use of the town common from July twelfth through the nineteenth. And permission to serve and sell alcoholic beverages for the annual feast on July fifteenth through the eighteenth.
Mr. Chairman, based on all the recommendations, I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
I.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I, motion carries. Thank you and good luck.
The next item on the agenda are the appointments. First one is the G one A, and this is for the Bristol County Water Authority. And this is the term to expire February twenty twenty-four. And here we have Robert Martin of Tensing Anna Drive with interest in reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Robert Martin to the Bristol County Water Authority.
Second.
Motion made by Tim to reappoint Robert Martin, seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lay. I just wanted to say something quick that
Please.
Um, I've had the pleasure of working with Bob Martin for, um, a couple of years now as a liaison for BCWA. And, uh, it has, he has been nothing but professional. He's been knowledgeable and he's really on the ball in terms of uh, making sure to, uh, call us and get us the information that we need when things are, uh, happening over there at BCWA. So I just wanted to say that for the record. Thank you.
Again, I'm not surprised to hear it, but it's nice to hear just the same. So excellent. All right. So we motion and made by Tim, seconded by Mary to reappoint. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
I.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, um, G one B, and this is for the Recreation Board with the term to expire February twenty twenty-four. And here we have Michael S. Cabral with interest in reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint, uh, Michael.
Second.
Motion made by Tony to reappoint, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
I.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
About that, I'm just noticing, um, that we have a second auxiliary as Donnie Squires, but the first auxiliary is vacant. Um, how come we haven't moved Donnie up? Is that something that we should address on the next meeting?
Agreed. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you put that on our next, uh, wait a minute. Mr. Solicitor, any reason why I can't request that in part of this meeting?
None whatsoever.
Excellent. So by, uh, Councilman Perola's suggestion, if we could, uh, put that on our next meeting and if you could also reach out, uh, to Donald Squires to make sure that he's comfortable with that. I can't see why he wouldn't be, but thank you. Great suggestion. So we had, I'm sorry, did we take that vote already? I took me off the game there for me.
Yeah, we did.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, um, agenda item G one C, and this is for the Harbor Master with the term to expire January twenty twenty-four. And we have Greg Marsely looking for interest in reappointment.
I make a motion that we reappoint, uh, Greg Marsely as our harbor master.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Tony to reappoint Greg Marsely, seconded by Tim. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take a, a moment just to say that all the feedback that I get from the residents are, are outstanding on Greg. Um, he's always there to help out, work hard, put in for extra maintenance. He's doing a great job. I think he's doing a stellar job. And, uh, well, I could have him. So, um, glad we were able to reappoint him.
Should I say I'm not surprised again? Because I just feel like I'm supposed to do that. So.
I have to concur with that, Mr. Chairman.
I think we all do. And it's almost, how many years has it been? Almost like ten years almost, is it?
Yeah.
Cool, close to that.
Yeah, it's like nine, eight or nine. Yeah, wow. Good job. Awesome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
I.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G one D. And this is for the Historic District Commission, and this is to fill an unexpired term ending in July twenty twenty-one. And here we have, um, two interests in appointment. We have Renee Cordalessa and we also have Sarah Butler.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, I think we were lucky to have two good candidates for this, but I'd like to nominate Sarah Butler to fill this vacancy. Um, I give her a great deal of credit for her background and also experience. And then, you know, she'd probably still be serving on here if, um, she, she stepped away, uh, because work became a little too busy to do both. So I think that she'll be a great asset again on the committee.
So Chairman, I'll second that also with a comment, uh, that first of all, thank you to both candidates. I have to concur. Um, although Sarah has been on the board previously, so this is some more of a reappointment, uh, for Sarah. However, I certainly like to thank Renee and, uh, like her to stay on base, you know, because with her experience with the district, uh, it would certainly be very valuable in the future.
I agree with the comments that were made and I would, I would also say that Renee, that if an opportunity, because there will always be an opportunity that will come forward at some point, is to put your name in again. Um, I do, I think Sarah's experience and past experience is extremely valuable. I also thought that, uh, Renee's experience of being on the other side of the table in an empathetic view was also very valuable. So there's an opportunity, um, for both candidates, Sarah right now and Renee in the future. Okay. Any other discussion from the council?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, I think they were both great candidates. Um, uh, particularly, uh, Sarah stood out for me in regards to the training aspect of the HDC. I think it's great that she's, uh, looking to do some training and getting, you know, everybody moving forward on the same page with all her knowledge in regards to historic architectural background. Um, I just think she's going to be a great asset. But again, yeah, Renee, please, please, uh, stay tuned. And, uh, you know, keep up the good work. Thanks.
And I, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lay. I, uh, I think we always try to find ways to plug some of these others into uh, some of the boards and commissions in this town. And so hopefully that, uh, draw of public services strong in Renee and, and maybe we can get her plugged in somewhere else here in town.
I don't hear us in any other page than that. That's outstanding. So, uh, any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
I.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is item G one E. And this is for the Capital Project Commission to fill the unexpired term ending in May twenty twenty-five. And here we have, um, Charles Calner with interest in appointment. And we also have Charles Coelho also with interest in appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for us to appoint Charles Coelho. However, I would like to make a statement on that. I had the opportunity, even though I had missed the interview with, with, uh, my fellow counselors. I did have the opportunity to reach to both of them individually and speak with them. And I was very impressed with both resumes. And, uh, where, what they can really, uh, contribute to the town. So, uh, but, uh, I will certainly, uh, stay with Charles Coelho. But like to thank you both of them, you know, for their interest.
Is there a second? Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to appoint Charles Coelho. Is there any other discussion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just to briefly state that, wow, did we have some both great candidates for this and, uh, you know, Charlie had, um, Calender has four years of municipal experience and, uh, comes with a huge knowledge base. So I would really like my colleagues to consider him for, or we could try to plug him in somewhere else where he can be of use of the town. Cause I think he's, uh, I don't want him to get discouraged. This isn't, this isn't a, this is small. Just we, looks like we're going with somebody else, but it, I want him to know that we value him and we want him to be involved in the town somewhere else.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
I.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G one F. And this is for special constable, private investigators, matrons and retiree officers with terms to expire in January twenty twenty-two. I do want to make a note that in the packet, I inadvertently put the wrong list in there. Um, but I did send the council members today a corrected list with the town clerk. Um, I corrected that to Melissa Cudero. Uh, the police chief did send me the correct list. However, I did place the incorrect list inadvertently on the packet. So I will put the corrected list on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Can we check with Lou Chirillo, see if he still wants to be a council?
We can ask him.
Thank you. What's this council's pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the list, uh, to, um, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mary?
I. I've had this list for many, many years and I don't know what we, I've never been pressed into service yet.
Captain, you have any idea what we're supposed to do with this?
Tomorrow's, tomorrow's no storm. Look at the expression on Captain's face. I don't know.
I'm prepping for the, uh, big storm tomorrow with the Department of, uh, Public Works director right there.
The administrator just said, so.
Oh, I didn't hear him. I'm sorry.
If you feel the need, go out and, uh, help people get to the right place, right?
We're hoping it's, we're hoping it's minimal, right?
There you go. Do we have a motion and a second to approve? Is there any other discussion? No? Okay, hearing none, Mary?
I.
Tony?
I.
Tim?
I.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G one G, and this is for the Board of Tenants Affairs with terms to expire in January twenty twenty-three. And we have Donald F. Luminalo Senior with the interest in reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead, Tim.
To reappoint Donald F. Lumina- Luminalo, sorry, uh, to the Board of Tenants Affairs.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to reappoint Donald Luminalo to the Board of Tenant Affairs. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mary's going to make me smile here, so.
No, no, I'm, yes, I.
Giggle is infectious. So we had a I from Mary. Tony?
I.
Tim?
I.
Aaron?
I.
I also vote I, motion carries. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is G one H, and this is for the North and East Burial Grounds Commission with terms to expire in January twenty twenty-six. And we have James F. Riquel looking for interest in reappointment.
Make a motion that we reappoint, uh, Mr. Riquel.
Second.
Motion made by Tony to reappoint Mr. James Riquiyo, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries.
And the last one in this item is G1I, and this is for the Bristol Prevention Coalition. And this is for a term to expire in January 2023. And we have Barbara Palumbo, the coordinator for the Supremation Coalition in regard to a proposed list of members for 2021 to 2023.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the list as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mary to approve, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye, and this is the part that I say for all of us, thank you. Thank you to all of the boards and commissions, the members of those boards and commissions, the applicants who at this moment were not appointed, but took the time, effort, and energy to put themselves out there to be interviewed and discussed and to be considered to give back to the community. This council and this town very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item of business is H1, and this is the Director of Community Development Williamson in regard to the proposed Bike Path Connector. This is the route presentation, and this is continued from the November 18, 2020 meeting.
Hi, Diane. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. So I know that the, we've had a lot of dialogue about this. I know there's been a lot of workshops, such and so forth. Could you tell us and the public what, where we are at the moment and what's being proposed and what you're asking the council to do in this meeting?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So again, I'm Diane Williamson, Director of Community Development. And as was stated in November 2020, we presented a recommendation to the council. It was a public hearing. The public hearing was closed. And after the public hearing, the council asked the consultant team and myself to do more public engagement with the residents directly along the proposed route. We, if you will recall, had at that time recommended a route, a single route. And we had heard at the public hearing that that was something that was of a concern to folks. So we, before we had the public engagement workshops, we took a step back and we revisited the idea of a single route, and we decided that it was much better and much more advantageous to do a network of streets in the downtown neighborhood. So we would be looking at Thane Street, and we had the downtown network where several cross streets, High Street, Wood Street, and then we would link up with Ferry Road, Hope Street, and then Ferry Road South. So after that change was made to the plan, we set four public workshops. We sent out almost 800 letters to the folks living directly along those designated roadway areas. And we had the public workshops, we had about 100 people altogether, maybe just over 100 people on the workshops. We had a little over seven hours of public engagement. We also presented to the Town's Conservation Commission. They had reached out to us for presentations specifically on the trees along Ferry Road, which is, was their, their specific area of interest. We had, I think, excellent feedback from the public. We had good suggestions. We had a lot of positive comments. We had a lot of questions, and we were able to answer a lot of questions. The consultant team also prepared very good graphics to illustrate what these different improvements would look like on the different segments. And I have attached those to my memo in your packet, and I also, I have a little slideshow teed up if you would like to look at any of those in more detail.
So let's stop just there, and maybe we can go right to that. Chris, if you could give Diane the capability of sharing your screen. And I think some of those slideshows or those pictures in particular will help clarity, give clarity to what's being proposed. At least I think it will.
Okay. And while we wait for Chris to let me share the screen, I also want to say that this project is a feasibility study and a design study. This is something that is not only consistent with the comprehensive plan, but implements the comprehensive plan where we try to address connectivity between the bicycling network that we have in areas where we don't have the bicycle infrastructure. So this is something that we've partnered with the state on. We have state grant funding. And we are looking ultimately to get plans that would be what we call grant-ready plans for implementation. The, one of the goals of this project is to be able to, again, tee up the town to be able to get future grant funds for implementation of the bicycle infrastructure. So I'll just start with this slide. Can you all see this that I'm sharing?
We can. Is it possible to make it a tad larger, Diane? Kind of full screen it, if you will?
Is that better?
I think it's clear enough. Maybe if you could just give clarity, just in case it's not as clear as we think it is of, of the green line versus the blue line, and just a couple of reference streets, just everyone knows where we are.
Right. So this was the bicycle network map that we had created after the public hearing when it was requested that we look at this as more of a network rather than a route. The green line is the west side of Ferry Road, which would come north to, there's a potential linkage at Wood Street, or it would come around to Hope Street with a connection onto High Street. Then we've got potential cross streets here. We've got Wally. We've got, you're going to test my, these aren't labels, you're going to test my skill here. We've got Constitution Church Street, State Street, and Franklin Street. And then this was a segment of Washington Street up to, you know, potentially link over to Perry Street. And the dotted lines are to indicate future connectivity. We heard a lot of interest in connecting this to the east side of town to link that area and those neighborhoods downtown to be able to access the bike path. And this yellow line is the existing bike path just north of the park, Independence Park. We, we agree that that's something that we want to get to in future phases. This plan and this study that we're working on now was to connect the southern area of town to the, to the, to the downtown network. But this is, in my opinion, definitely a start, and we need to keep moving forward to connect the neighborhoods to the east side of, from the east side of Metacom. This is an example of the Ferry Road. This is the existing conditions. This is in front of Life World. And this is a Google map. This was before the street was paved, so that's why the street looks a little rough. I believe this is Sydney. Am I right about that?
You are.
Sydney. Um, this was the conceptual layout that the consultant team provided for us. And it is, again, a shared use path. It varies in width, but it's, I think the minimum is eight feet for a shared bicycle pedestrian path. We would maintain the trees, and in your memo, we have the trees that we would be able to, we have identified that we could protect, preserve, and work around as shown in this illustration. We would have signage. We would have, you know, appropriate striping. And this was the illustration for that segment of Ferry Road. This would also, I wanted to highlight, has, would have granite curbing. Our comprehensive plan requires that when we do any project like this on a state road, we install granite curbing, which I think would be a small, a big improvement, but a small element of the design. This also illustrates around the tree, we would have previous pavement. And there's a very specific detail which would enable us to preserve the tree and actually, I think, improve the tree's health, because this is very compacted now. And it would allow some better aeration into the, the root system for the existing trees that we can maintain and want to maintain. This is a typical downtown intersection. This is actually Union Street. We don't have a linkage on Union, but this is just to illustrate what it would look like for a typical downtown intersection. This is heading north on High Street. And this is the existing condition, and then the proposed condition is a rendering to illustrate where the pavement markings would be. And some of it has crosswalks and then some wayfinding signage. And again, this is early in the design. We haven't detailed where the signage would go or what would be on it. But this is just to illustrate typical road section. The shadows that are sort of the name for these symbols are, it's a, it's a, it's a word that's created from the word shared and arrow, and they call it a shadow. And this would be placed so that riders would know that they need to, you know, pay attention. There's parked cars, and they need to be able to navigate through the streets, being mindful of those things. This will also heighten the driver's awareness that this is a road that is shared. Again, these are public streets. Bicycles have the right to ride on them. And the idea is to increase the safety by putting it top of mind, letting everybody know that these are, these are shared streets by drivers and bicycles. This is Thane Street. This is the existing conditions plan for Thane Street. And we have sort of a two-phased approach for Thane Street. In the short term, I think we'd like to continue the pavement markings and the signage that we just showed you on the other cross street. But then ultimately, a future phase of this project would include a shared street option, which gives a little bit more of a pedestrian feel. Again, we've, we've used this in our illustrations, and the, sort of the interesting thing for me is that this, with the outdoor dining, you know, pre-COVID, this might have seemed a little bit extreme. But now we've had the outdoor dining on, on, on State Street, and it's been very successful. And I think the business has enjoyed and want to keep that going. So it was interesting that it kind of came about. And it's, it's shown in this illustration. Earlier, illustrations had it on the, the west side of, on Thane's, but we show it here, which is where it is today. And again, this is a treatment that would be for a future phase. We would need a little bit more implementation funding for this, but it would, it would kind of create a much more, you know, pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, shared environment downtown. And then these are just some details of the, this is High Street, where we would have the rapid flashing beacon. We would have, this would be the extent of the bike path up along the west side of Hope Street, or actually, it's sort of southwest side of Hope Street here. We would look at a bus stop. Well, there is a bus stop there. We would look at a bike rack, benches, and so forth. And then this is an existing crosswalk in front of the lobster pot. And these other crosswalks would be in place to create the pedestrian linkage there and the bicycle linkage. And this is a picture of what these look like from another community, just for illustration. This is from Norton, Mass. These are, you've probably seen these now in other places. They would flash on call to allow the bicycle and the pedestrian to cross the street safely. And this is what we would be looking at for the connections across Hope Street. Again, the enhanced crosswalks, the shadow markings or the arrows with the bicycle stencils to direct the flow of traffic and have the enhanced crosswalk with the stop bar. And then this is, again, this is, that was Hope and, Hope and Church. This is Hope and Constitution. Same thing would apply here. These are some examples of some of the wayfinding signage. We would use the town's branding, and we have a local vendor who has been creating our street signs for us. And so we would use that, hopefully, we could use that same local vendor to create the wayfinding signs. And we just show, this would be our branding to coordinate with the wayfinding signage that we've already installed. And we could identify points of interest, you know, Maritime Center, museums, and, and also the network route. And we could even sign that for different ways to get around, you know. Someone had suggested that maybe we kind of color code the network for the different places that it will take you. Wood Street, High Street, or downtown. And these would be put at different points there. So it's decision points on the roadway, and then when you need to turn, and then again, to confirm where you are. And I think they're sort of, I think they're placemaking. I mean, we are kind of known for the red, white, and blue, and we have these wayfinding signs all over town now, so I think it's helpful. And then this was to provide you the detail on the Ferry Road. We had, the Town's Tree Warden walked it with us. And then we commissioned Stanley Tree to help us investigate the existing condition of the trees. Some of them are in excellent condition, and we want, would want to maintain them, obviously. Some are not in good condition, and, and I think maybe in need of, of maintenance sooner rather than later. And then some are small and could be replaced easily. And so this is coded. Our consultant took the Stanley Tree inventory and color-coded it to determine which trees were ones that we'd want to preserve and which trees may have to be replaced and which trees we could replant. And then this is a detail of a Ferry Road section. And I don't know if you've noticed, we had stakes out there. I don't know how, how successful those were with the weather. But we did actually also stake it out so that anybody walking along the road could kind of get the flavor for what this would be like in real life. And this is an existing tree in front of 131 Ferry Road, and it shows the width of the path and how it would split around the tree with landscaping and signage, and then resume again for the combined path. And again, this is very schematic. We would need to get permitting from DOT. We would need to get permitting from scenic roadways, and that all has to be designed and reviewed with them. This is a picture that shows the detail for the flexible course paving at the existing trees. And this is what, we presented this to the Conservation Commission as well. And I think this is something that, as I mentioned before, the soil out there is very compacted. It's walked. You know, there's a lot of people who walk it today. And so this is something that I think would help the health of the trees long term. And I think, oh, sorry, this is, this is again, a future phase of the project on Thane Street to just show what a real shared street configuration could look, look like and feel like. And I think we were recommending this as, as a later phase because of the extensive design and permitting that we, we might need, and also for the, the the implementation funding that we would need for this phase of the project. So I think the hope for the Thane Street section was to work on enough of a schematic plan to get a really good visualization that we could then, you know, kind of showcase for future grant funding to take it to that next step. And that concludes the slideshow.
Thank you, Diane.
So again, I've mentioned this before, but just to reiterate, this is funding for design and study. And again, the goal is to move this to the next phase. The way we had established the scope of work, we, we needed to check in with the council before we commissioned the consultants to go forward and take it to the next level of design. But we are at the point in the project where we are asking for that support to go forward, and that would be looking at design and permitting for Thane Street and the down, I'm sorry, for Ferry Road and the downtown network. And then we'd see how much we could do for, for Thane Street. But we'd like to, at least at a minimum, have some better visualization and schematics for Thane Street.
Thank you.
So I think. I think, I think that's all I have, other than just to say that there were at the ferry road workshop, the residents had presented concerns about the trees drainage and accessibility to the properties. And we believe that all of that would be part of the next phase of design. The consultants are confident that they'll be able to work through that level of detail. We'll get more involved coordinating with the property owners and we'll be able to really lay this out in a, in a well-designed plan. I, I just personally want to say that, you know, for about 20 years or maybe 20 plus years, we've been looking for a pedestrian path on ferry road. And I think this project, the shared bike path is a win-win because it, it provides the connectivity and a safer environment for the pedestrian and the bicycle on that segment of roadway. So that's, that's all I have unless you have any other questions.
I'm not going to open up the questions yet. I know that there are a lot of questions from the council and comments that I'm sure that we all would like to make. But I would like to hold that just for a moment. And Chris, if you could go back to our regular screen.
While Chris is doing that, Chairman, I also want to say, which I neglected, there will be no parking removed as part of this plan. You saw the network and the visualization of the shared road markings, which are intended to work with the parked cars. And again, guide bicycles so that they are informed that there is a row of parking and they need to stay to the, you know, side of the vehicle so that they are out of harm's way with the, with the parking. And so we are not proposing to eliminate any parking with this project.
It's an outstanding point and an important one. Thank you. So as I said, before I opened it up to questions and comments, I know that Dr. John King is on the call. Chris, if you could give Dr. King access and unmute him. And I know that I had spoken with Dr. King a little bit, actually a couple of days ago. And he was going to share how this kind of, how the university connects with this and, and what the university is offering. Dr. King, if you could state your name and, and I guess the university address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Town Council members, Bristol residents. I'm John King, Vice President for Student Life at Roger Williams University at One Old Ferry Road in Bristol, Mass, in Bristol, Rhode Island. And it's a wonderful opportunity to be here this evening to speak on behalf of President Mialis and the university about this exciting potential project. From the beginning, whenever we've studied this issue in our classrooms, whether it be in construction management or engineering, we've always considered this to be a two-way connection. The town residence to university campus and our students on campus to downtown and the East Bay bike path. And also an opportunity for our 286 employees who live in Bristol to be able to commute to work by bicycle in a safe way. We believe this proposed project is in the best interest of both Bristol residents and the university for several reasons. Safer bike access from campus to downtown Bristol will result in more customers for Bristol businesses. Those customers being our students. In addition, students will feel more connected to the community and become stronger stakeholders during their four to six year career as university students in Bristol. Bristol residents, families and retirees will be able to finally safely bike to campus. And in non-pandemic times, be able to use our library, attend speakers open to the public, access our waterfront shell path and hidden meadow on the bay, leading to our sailing center from dawn to dusk. There are currently four parking spots, which very few people know about, that are reserved for Bristol residents in our north parking lot at the end of Roger Williams University Way and just before the US Sailing National Headquarters. And these parking spots are actually designed for Bristol residents to be able to park there and then access our Shell Path, which is a beautiful preserved piece of real estate that few people are aware of. The university is further committed to supporting the bike network when potentially built out. And will provide a 15 space parking lot to the public from Memorial Day to Labor Day, located at the top of old, lower old ferry road, beneath the large white water tower and just steps from the light and crosswalk to the bridge house, where the connection is proposed to start along Metacom and then leading to Ferry Road. In addition, we will provide a kiosk with signage detailing the route, a scannable map link, biker expectations and safety information. Someday, though it's very hard to imagine right now, there will be a designated bike lane within the next Mount Hope Bridge whenever that happens. And this project not only allows us to prepare and better the biking experience for town residents and university students now, but it also allows us to prepare for the future. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. King. So I'm going to open it up. I'd like to open up to the council just in a moment. I know that I myself, and I know we all have received, and we have it in our packets, two letters of support, letters of opposition. We've all received calls and emails of support and opposition. So I know that we all want to speak to some of those positives, negatives, concerns. I know a couple for myself is, I'm going to allow my colleagues to go first, but I want to speak about particularly ferry. I know that in our last call, had a lot of residents that were concerned on the lower High Street, but they were not the only concerned, but there was a, a lot of concerns expressed by them. So I know that we need to talk about and address that. And also about the, the change here of, instead of the direct route, a networked approach. And I think that's a very big positive. Instead of, I would say forcing is too strong a word, but cajoling and suggesting people go a particular direction was a challenge. And I think we've mitigated either all or most of that with this, or at least the proposal as it is right now. That being said, that I'd like to open up to the council. I saw Mary's hand up first. I'm going to ask Mary to just start off, please.
I have a lot of questions, but I wanted to ask Dr. King a question. I don't know if we're still able to do that.
Oh, well, if he's on the call, then absolutely. He is, and Dr. King, you are muted at the moment, but I think there you go.
I'm all set, Councilor Plora.
Oh, thank you. So one of the, there, there are a couple of key points that keep being, that are continuously raised in the letters that we get in support of the project. One is the access to the university. And the other is access to Blightwell. And I know Blightwell has some serious reservations and concerns because of the number of driveways and parking in, in, you know, egress of their cars. You mentioned on the university with, not talking about COVID times, but just with security in general and college campuses and everywhere else. Are you saying and willing to put into writing that anybody in Bristol resident or anyone else who is on the bike path has full access to explore the campus itself? And go down and, you know, whether it's the library or there's an event going down to the waterfront there and just seeing the, the, the campus if people are interested. One letter mentioned specifically green space at the college camp, at the campus. And so that was a question that was not very clear. I know that you had submitted stuff in the, in writing about the parking lot and that sort of thing. But what about this other aspect? Is that something that will be in a formal agreement?
So pre pandemic, the university has always allowed Bristol residents to use the university library. We just asked that they register when they enter the library. As part of our agreement with the Coastal Resource Management Council, when we were successful in reclassifying our waterfront zone, we committed to public access to our Shell Path and our meadow up to the Sailing Center and the deck of the Sailing Center where there's a publicly accessible outdoor bathroom with plumbing. And those areas from dusk to dawn are available to the public and Bristol residents. I would not be able to commit on behalf of the university to making our green space available while the campus is in session, while our students are there or when, or when we have summer conferences. But the library and the meadow and the Shell Path up to the Sailing Center, that is all space that we are more than happy to share with the public.
So when, so if someone just went to your main entrance and said, gee, this is a really cool place. I'd like to check out this school and just see this, this campus. Are they going to be allowed to go in on their bikes and just explore the campus in general without a destination to the library or the Shell Path?
Yes, certainly. To drive through on bike in non-pandemic times, absolutely. And anybody is welcome to drive through the campus. Or ride, or ride a bike through the campus.
Yeah, because I, I mean, sometimes it's a little more difficult for that. Now, I, I think there was one of the question that came up when you were just answering that, but it'll come back. Oh, you mentioned, you, you mentioned Bristol residents. What about people that may be coming from other communities to use any of those facilities?
Well, the parking lot, for instance, that I mentioned that we would dedicate, that would be open to visitors to Bristol who are trying to access the bike path from the Mount Hope Bridge. You know, that, that part of town. So that would not just be limited to Bristol residents. The access to the Shell Path is there for the public. We would promote it mostly for Bristol residents, but it is a public access zone.
So even though these doc, these are in other documents that you have, such as you mentioned coastal resources and so forth, are, are, is this something that you would put in writing as an agreement? Just to be clear, that residents have the access to the campus, to these particular areas without, you know, being hassled in any way?
Yes, I, I don't believe we hassle people when they come to campus. Unfortunately, during COVID, when that whole situation started, we, we did have to stop people from walking dogs and bicycling through campus. We weren't allowing visitors. We weren't even allowing our own employees to be on campus. But yes, now that is for the access to the grounds. It, it, it does not mean that people have access, the public has access to facilities and to buildings where we're conducting class, classes and the work of the university.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to be clear. And I think that's something that if this is approved, we need to be clear and have those agreements in writing to Diane. I, I'll, I'll go and if anybody else has any questions for, for Dr. King before I do any of my other questions. So I, I just didn't want him to leave.
Thank you. So counsel, is there any questions for Dr. King before we don't hold him up, if you will? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. King.
You're welcome.
Mary, so I have a couple of different questions. So one is to Mike Arcillo. And Mike is there, if the state pays for the signage on the roads, the shadows or whatever and wayfinding signs, is they, do they have any right to tell us what to do in terms of the future, in terms of maybe making a dedicated bike path or anything like that? I'm talking about the High Street part right now, which would be a town road.
No, they, they couldn't do that without town acquiescence. They'd have to come back to the town council.
But they can't say, well, because we funded this project and we paid for this bike path and we paid for this, we paid for that.
Correct. They, they're going to be, and Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, they'll be turning this over to us, correct? For maintenance, et cetera.
So on the specific High Street segment, which Mary's referring to, it would, they would stay town roads. They would just have the state funded signage and state funded pavement markings and crosswalk enhancements. I, I think this would be just like any other grant where we take, you know, state money, but this, the facilities are still owned by the town and, and part of the town's road network.
Well, I'm asking because there's been some, you know, some commentary in emails and, and letters that we've gotten that have sort of made that alleged that that could happen down the road. And I just wanted to make sure that that is not going to be the case. And on the crosswalks down, particularly as you showed them on Hope Street, I have to say I got a little bit of a kick out of that because we have fought very hard to have crosswalks at each of those, each of those corners. And the state has refused. As you know, we've had meetings with the state about that, where they've come to, I think, council meetings in the past. What makes you think that they're going to agree to do that as part of this project?
We would need the DOT permit. And I might have to defer to the consultants who recommended that. We were actually surprised to see that in their recommend, you know, surprised in a good way to see that in their recommendation because we, we had the same feeling that they were, you know, never coming back. And the consultant said, oh no, they'll, they'll have to come back. So I think that's a question that I would have to put to the consultant and then it would obviously be part of the DOT's physical alteration permit to get permission, to, to get permission for that.
So Mary, just to go on that and please stay on your point that you were making, but I would certainly absolutely support a more holistic approach on that and not stop there. I mean, my goodness, how much dialogue did we have talking about everybody smiling right now? You know what I'm talking about? So if, if there's success here for justification of a path, there must then be success for access to, for example, post office, library, across the street on both sides of Bradford. Gosh, we can keep going and going and going. So I would, I would wholly support. In fact, I don't think I would support it any other way unless we did a more holistic approach on that because Mary, you make a great point. So I apologize for interrupting. Go ahead.
That's okay. That's okay. I just have a couple more and then I'll be quiet for a while. The bike shadows, which are the pavement markings, do they have to be a certain size? Or do we have say on the size that they would be?
I don't know the answer to that, Mary. I know the spacing was discussed and I know there's I want to say there's a, well, I shouldn't say it because I might be wrong, but they don't have to be as close spaced, spaced as close as you would imagine them to be. So that was one thing that we were concerned about also with the frequency of these down the street. The size, I would have to check back with the consultant on that because that question hadn't come up yet.
I had less objection to, you know, some smaller, you know, I don't know, I don't, I'm not really good at discussing things in feet or yards or whatever. But you know, smaller pavement markings, just to reiterate the fact that it's a shared road than I do to some of the big ones. And just so happened today that I actually ended up on three different sections of bikeways today, driving. And so I, I cut off the highway because there's a lot of traffic and I ended up going through Kennedy Plaza. And that one seemed, those seemed to me to be a little smaller, but I was kind of right on top of them. There was a lot of traffic. And then also in Pawtucket, I was looking at one and I just happened to be going into a building and it was parked right near it. So I just did a quick with my own feet. I, I think it's probably like a good six or seven feet. I'm not sure with the arrows and everything. And then I also went down the actual path on Blackstone Boulevard, which is a different type of sign. So I think that that is a big, that is a big, it's important for me to know that because I think that some of those are very distracting in the beginning. I think it's a busy road. It, High Street is a very busy street, particularly in the middle of High Street, like on that sort of church to Franklin. And you have, you know, you, we have a red, white and blue stripe. And now we have all these other markings on both sides. I, I thought it was a little disconcerting to see them exactly almost in the similar spots where you had them on the, on the rendering. So I think it's important that if we can make them where, you know, bikers and, and, and drivers can see them, but not, you know, like if they could be like a little bit more subdued in that sense, you know, like downsized a bit because I think it's just going to be, I think that's all we're going to see on, on the road. And, and then I think my last question for the moment is, oh, two others. What is this that you're talking about? What is that? I, I intended all of the meetings with the same street one. I wasn't able to go to that one. What is, what are you proposing to do with the street? Is it some sort of a coating on? Like I didn't, I didn't. the street? Is it some sort of a coating on like I didn't I didn't understand what you're saying. I mean, I've been down some of those streets in other towns before. I don't really remember anything unusual about it.
So it would be sort of a a different texture of the pavement, and I don't know exactly what it would be yet, but it but the intent is to sort of make sort of those zones where pedestrians can you know, cross. And I think we've all seen them where they have like a almost looks like a cobbleish cobblestone sort of texture. I think that was that was the intended. Again, it's schematic. So it's really, I don't have the exact details. And I will also mention this. If the council is interested in in getting into any of these technical. Since I feel a little bit stretched in answering some of these technical questions, we do have the consultants on the call. If you wanted to bring them in to answer any of these, that would be they're available to do that with you. And and I think some of the back to the shared lane markings that you spoke of, I I know that there are certain standards. So we'd have to just look at what those standards are for those different segments.
Because I think the 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 problem, the issue that I have with this whole project is, you know, there's certain things that are kind of like no brainers to me, like the wayfinding and down on theme street and moving people more to downtown from from the bike path. I think that's an absolute given us, you know. We probably should have already been done without having to go out for any other funding. I think the high street, depending on the size and the look of the signage and the the pavement markers, I think that's would be a big difference. I mean, I've seen the petition and almost not everybody, but many, many, many people on who live on High Street have signed that petition and are very concerned. I don't know so much about pavement markers, but definitely about any kind of path that would come down at any point in time. Ferry Road is another concern that I have with the the driveways and the the walls and so forth. I think the bike, I'm not so much in favor of a bike path down there as I am a walking path, a sidewalk. And I'm wondering what is the, I mean, is it? Is it possible? I think this was might have been addressed in one of the meetings or maybe in a conversation I had with you. I mean, is it? I know you want bike path money, so that's why it sort of has to be a bike path or called the bike path. But how narrow can we go? Like, I think that path that you showed in the schematic is way too big, way too wide. With the with the center striping down the middle, I just don't think that's conducive to Ferry Road myself. I think it should be better to have something a little narrower. And I'm not sure how narrow if it can become like six feet, people still could be on a bike because I think you guys had mentioned in one of the meetings that serious bikers, serious bikers are not going to be on this path. They're going to be in the road anyway. And so I think that that is if this is sort of like a casual kind of thing, even if people have to walk their bike a little ways. Then that may be a better, a better solution for everybody involved. And what we do to mitigate, you know, the other letter that we got lots of letters that said, oh, we can get to Blithewold on our bike. And yet I'm not sure people are aware that Blithewold is not a big supporter of this project. Because they have four driveways and the number of cars that go in and out of there. I think they said they have 35,000 visitors a year. And that's about 15 to 20,000 cars in and out. And so there's some very serious concerns among them. So you know, so those are the some of my my concerns and questions. And I do think I think for me to vote on this, I would probably need to have the technical answers. The my last question, and this will be my last one for a while. Do we have another design, another say at the final design?
So let me just back up to the ferry road. My understanding from the design consultant team is that it has to be and from the state funder is that it has to be a minimum of eight feet to be the shared use bicycle path, pedestrian path.
Given the nature of that street or in the trees and everything you're trying to accomplish with the walls. Are there any waivers to go to like seven or six and a half? I mean, do you think there's any way to do that?
I don't know. When we had that, we had tried to go to six and we were told that's really not compliant. I don't know if we could speak out, you know, six and a half or seven. I I just I'd have to find out that answer. The other thing is my understanding is if we did a pedestrian path of six feet, bicycles could still could still use it. So I don't know if you really, it's sort of a distinction without a difference for me, except for the funding piece. And if we can make it eight feet and have it really be a truly shared path. That is you know, achieving a lot of goals. That that was again, why I supported this as a more of a win win for that for that area. The question, I'm sorry, I just forgot your last, your second question.
Like once if this goes to the design phase, will the council have a final say on the final design once it's done and would it be presented to us?
Right. And so I had been talking with the consultant this afternoon. I think we can definitely put some benchmarks in the in the the design, you know, there's a 50% plan or a 30% plan or whenever it feels appropriate to come back to the council to share the design details. I we can definitely do that. We can definitely do that. I I see as it.
No, it's okay, Mary and Diane, there's this council to to that point directly. We're approving it. So simply put, this vote tonight can include that requirement that it does not go forward without this council saying yes to it. So.
Right, right. And and again, when we when we go to the Department of Transportation and I think that we would need to make sure that everybody's seen it, you know, maybe that's a step where we get the presentation back to the council before we actually make the application to the DOT, you know, something like that. Yeah.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much.
I'd like to open up a council, other counselors. Anyone, Tim?
Chairman, I'll jump in. I first want to just thank all the residents for participating in the discussion. I know there was a lot of work put into that and I know the residents participated and I think we all thank them. We know that their input is very valuable. And to Diane and her team, thank you for all the hard work. I know you've put in countless hours on this. The proposed plan for me, I think, would be a fantastic enhancement to the town and I will just briefly go over some touch points on that. One for me is the safety item. I believe that this connector will act as a buffer for pedestrians and moving vehicles, really reducing accidents and injuries on the on this bike connector. I also believe that based on studies that I've read and New York City Department of Transportation, this will have an increase on our storefront sales and commerce, especially we just had we're having Unity Park develop. This is going to drive traffic over there and down Wood Street. I believe it's going to bring more commerce into the town. I also believe it's going to reduce road traffic, more available parking because people are going to be on bikes rather than getting in their cars. They're gonna they're gonna come down, decreasing pollution and our neighborhood is making it a cleaner area for us. There's a partnership with Roger Williams, which is fantastic. And they've thrown in some clear enhancements with parking and kiosses and bathrooms. It's going to increase tourism to different parts of the town. You don't just get dumped it on theme street, kind of wondering where to go next. It kind of leads you through this beautiful town and you end up at Blithewold watching the sunset. How amazing. Zero dollars out of the taxpayer's pocket. I mean, it's still going to be done on grants. And I just think finally that we're losing no parking spaces in this project. So so I just wanted to point out that I think it's a wonderful enhancement to the town. And I think it's going to be a benefit for us years to come, you know. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Tony. Um, no, I I definitely concur with, you know, with the fact that this is not so much a bike path as I see it. It is providing walkability for our residents. I mean, I know when I said as the town administrator, I've had to deal with at least four different incidents that have happened between Summer Street and the lobster park where it was very difficult for people to walk. People fell. People got hurt in some instance because of the uneven sidewalks. So I see this more as a walkability and provide an alternative to folks who normally go north going into the, you know, down High Street, Wood Street, Hope Street, down to Guitarras, then down to the waterfront. Then across the boardwalks, which is a walk that I enjoyed very much five days a week. But certainly provides alternatives to going the other direction, going south. I know a few times my wife and I tried to get to Blithewold as well as Calum and Fathers, and it was very difficult to to walk that path there. So I see this as a need, much needed improvement for the neighborhoods. I fully understand the concerns and, you know, like Tim pointed out, I did, we all received many letters in favor and opposition and share and many of these folks share serious concerns. I understand that. But, you know, everything is a liability when you think about it. This is a liability. This, I live on Carter Street. In order to get out of Carter Street, even just to back out of my driveway. I have at least five people who own dogs on my street. I always have to be cautious backing out because I don't know when they walk down. College students skateboarding down Carter Street. It's a through way when you think about it, actually, especially when Saint Sones was open. That was constantly when there was a funeral, I could tell you that there was a wake going on, you know, just by the the amount of traffic going through Carter Street onto High Street. You know, so I mean, early in the morning, I see people walking constantly. They take advantage of these beautiful sidewalks that we have now, you know, thanks to Diane Maderas, who took the initiative back then. And now thanks to our current administrator, who continues to improve the sidewalks for walkability. And certainly by extending this, again, I don't see this, even though we call it a bike path connector. I call them all is a walking path and provide additional options for many of our residents in town.
Thank you, Tony. Aaron?
Mr. Chairman, Aaron Lay here. My colleagues made so many good points already. And that's one of the greatest things about going last, as you know, Mr. Chairman, which you usually go last and but I can speak about this a little bit from my perspective as a father of young children who are going to be growing up here in Bristol and I'm super excited about the prospects of them having safe streets and safe bikeways for them to walk on. And I'm particularly excited about this idea that we're thinking ahead in terms of connecting all parts of town to this bike path so that we can all walk and we can all bike on on these streets or that maybe our kids will be able to get to school or they'll be able to drive or ride their bikes to you know, Mount Hope High School safely without us worrying about them too much. So it's it's really exciting to think about it from from that perspective as a as a father. I think also you know, from a public health standpoint, I think that we should always be trying to find ways to encourage people to get out of their cars and and be outside. I think one of the things with COVID-19, I remember the town administrator speaking about it at one of our meetings at one point where, you know, people were outside, you know, they were outside enjoying the fresh air and everything like that. And I think that one of the things with COVID-19 is it's going to have a lot more of us who are going to be enjoying the outdoors or we've formed a relationship with the outdoors that we've never had before. And so I think that in terms of dining outside and biking and things like that, I think we're going to be seeing a little bit more of that. And I think it's really important for us to plan which types of roads we want to see bikes on and which ones we don't. And I and I think from a safety standpoint and a public health and safety standpoint. I think that that's good. And I think it's also good for drivers to be able to think ahead and say, hey, look, like, that's not the kind of road I want to be on. I don't feel comfortable around bicyclists. So, you know, I'm gonna maybe do this street or that street or something else. It really leaves it the individual freedom of people to make their own choices. I could probably go on and on and on, but I'll just make a couple more just points. The merchants seem to be very excited about this. And they've submitted letters in support of it. And I've heard them speaking about this even before we got this grant. This was something that they were very excited about. When you go downtown and talk to some of those businesses, it's really nice to see the public input that was involved in this. The tremendous amount of effort Diane that you put into this and all of these meetings that you went late into night. Engaging residents of Bristol to get their input on this was absolutely incredible and inspiring to see the way that your team has been able to tailor this to the concerns of the citizens that are that are here in our town. And then lastly, when I when I hear of, you know, folks from the Conservation Commission also saying that hey, look, this is something that we like. This is something that we can support. That helps me a lot know that the environmental footprint or the impact of that footprint is going to be kept as small as possible. So that's why I support it. I'm super excited about it and I might start biking after this.
Mr. Chairman, Tony, just two quick points, you know, I obviously I did forget to thank Diane for the tremendous amount of work that's been put into it. So it's very much appreciated that you've gone there. And obviously you mean well, you know, for the welfare of our residents. But also to listen to them as the amount of time, the workshops and the, you know, just listening to the phone calls and other communications they came through. Certainly. The other point is, I'm glad to also hear that we are looking for alternatives other than High Street. The High Street is not to be the designated route, you know, for the bikers. That certainly is a very important point, you know, to consider as well. And I'm glad to hear that we're looking for a network in options versus, you know, focus on High Street.
Can I say Diane, High Street is incredibly busy. I'll say that again, it's incredibly busy and this idea that the students don't have great access to downtown is just not true. I see them get off the shuttle and walk down State Street every day. When they're here in, you know, bus pulls at at a time. So I know that that's it. The other thing I just forgot to mention Diane and sort of touched on it in the presentation and you know, part of my concern about this is I wish you were doing an east west route. That's what I wish we were doing first as a priority. And I think that in looking at the east west, I think you need to look further down to the north end of town as well. So people coming at, I'd say Mason Farm, for example, you know, they maybe can get across Medicom because of you know, the light at Tupelo. But then when they if they went all the way down Tupelo, they're kind of at a weird place on Hope Street to cross because you've got to the little hill. And I think the crossings, those are there. I think I said to you, my sister used to do it when my nephew was young. He was maybe like five or six years old. I don't know how that kid could go from Mason Farm to High Street like that young, but he did. And I thought, wow, that's pretty dangerous to do. And I think there's so many families and so many people living on the west side of that, I mean, the east side of Medicom that to get them safely to the bike path. You know, in in the north end of town, not just people coming from the college, wherever the cross down at Woodlawn or Bayview, whatever street, but it people in the other parts of town, the big neighborhoods, somewhat densely populated, like Phantom Drive and others that really need to be addressed. And and I think that is something that we really need to commit to. And I I kind of wish reason I struggle with this so much is you know, this is sort of an idea. I remember seeing this project presented by the students with one of their, you know, community things. And I remember one of their designs was to go under Medicom actually as a tunnel, which I thought was great to get across street. I think if we were out there and had a discussion, I was like, okay, we're going and hence our bike ability in Bristol. What are our priorities? I'm not sure we would have all taken that Ferry Road part on, you know what I mean? I guess it might be different for everybody, depending on where you live and what you see. But I I think that east west connection is is a huge one. So I just wanted to mention that because I, in your plan, you didn't really, you just talked about the downtown, but you didn't talk about people just wanting to be on the bike path who live in other parts of Bristol.
I agree. I agree. And I I know, you know, we have to start somewhere and I think this had some momentum to sort of kick it off. But I know when the heads did their bike ability audit, there were a lot of people on the east side of Medicom who said what you're what you're saying tonight, that they want to see the connection. And I think that we can definitely build on this. We've got good momentum now. We've got a lot of people who had attended the workshops or reached out and want to see that connectivity continue. So I think this will, if we can keep moving forward with this, I think that'll show success to then bring in the other neighborhoods, you know, the way you suggest. The other thing I wanted to mention too about High Street and the downtown network is that we were able to obtain data from an app. And it's 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 really a percentage of the bicycle riders. It's not all of them, but there are a lot of bicycle riders on on these streets already. And so I know you said, well, the students, you know, there was And so I know you said, well, the students, you know, there one, there one user group. There are a lot of other user groups that um, are already on these streets. So I think to that point, it's it's good to have the safety enhancements sort of building from the core. And um, then, you know, like we said, going out into the east and west and um, and connecting, but but these streets have have good bicycle use today, so.
They absolutely do. And I think that is um, part of the point uh when people, you know, prior to you moving to like a like a um, different streets to a network is that there are lots of people are in High Street already. Um, and so do we really need to direct everyone there? Or is that, you know, how much more people are they gonna be? Maybe we're already maxed out on some of that. We don't really know, you know, I don't really see students at all times of year coming down on their bikes to come downtown. I I really don't. Um, but I do definitely think that needs to be like a better sidewalks and on Ferry Road. And also, um, and I'm not sure if we can negotiate this and if we go forward with this, but the uh, the lobster part, lobster pot north to at least, at least through Wally Park in that area. I mean, I don't know if that's something we can negotiate into this project somehow. I mean, it's, you know, if you turned up Wally Street instead of High Street, you know what I mean? You might could cover it. Because that is, that area, I think Tony mentioned, that part of Hope Street is is really, really, really uh problematic, I think. Very dangerous, um, not not a lot of spots. And I think the, you know, especially when you get tree uh tree roots coming up and all of that, it gets, it's very, very uh dangerous. So I I'd love us to see if we go with this plan, be able to go a little further, a little further north and probably be able to get everywhere we'd want to get, at least through uh, you know, that narrow area by Halsey's and by Wally, Wally Park.
Okay, so we had a lot of dialogue. We had a great presentation from Diane to clearly state where we are at the moment. Things that I like are the uh lack of a delineated line um that once was going up High Street and now painted bicycles on the road with appropriate signage. And obviously, that's going to be discussed and what's appropriate. Um, I like the network versus the route um, because it addresses concerns of a a lot of the High Street neighbors worried that we were going to concentrate bicyclist walkers and everything up one road where they right now go wherever they want to go. So I think that was a major improvement. Multiple side streets signed correctly. I like the idea of maybe multi-colored paths, if you will, so different signs bring you to the same place, but you know which route you're supposed to go. One of the questions I asked, I met with Diane and Arnold Robinson, the consultant, on Friday. And I said, I've been riding my bike for forty-five years. I never needed anybody to tell me what route to take. And they said to me, well, it's because you live in Bristol. And I said, no, I'm sorry. I don't take that one. I just, I don't buy that. I I I look, I have a phone like everybody else does with GPS on it. If I want to get to where I want to get to, I just use that. And Arnold gave me a great example, which was, is that picture Wally. So if you're going down Wally from High Street, it ends at Hope Street at a very, very bad place to cross Hope Street. So if you're not from around here, then that is a really poor place to cross. And it's a great example of well-done signage, but not, you know, not over the top, but well-done signage to bring you in the right direction. Um, it was funny, it was part of my comment was is that, you know, I represent the people and so do you of Bristol. That's who my first priority is. And we've heard concerns from High Street. I think that these are 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 addressed to a level that I think is appropriate now, whereas before it wasn't. But we still have concerns on ferry. And a lot of people reach out, we've had, we all have. Um, I think that I I agree with Mary that, uh, in fact, I was gonna, uh, as I I mentioned, I was going to suggest this this evening. It's maybe more of a hybrid approach. Uh, I also talked to uh Diane and Arnold about this. And as opposed to a ten-foot path, I I couldn't agree more that that is not the feel. How do I know? I lived there. One of the pictures was the side street of my street. I picture my wife and my kids and I getting on our bikes and going down Ferry right now. I I don't feel the safest with the kids going down there. So having another space on that left-hand side uh is in so, in my mind, a very, very good thing. But not the East Bay Bike Path Extension, not lines in the middle of it, feeling like it's just, I I picture people in spandex goofy-looking helmets, pedals connected to their feet, going way too fast, going through stop signs, that kind of stuff. That's the joke. The serious part is, we lost a little boy on Papa Squash by nobody doing anything wrong, but it was a horrible thing. I know that's a white elephant in the room that we were all thinking on here. I think it's, and I think we all do, I think it's very appropriate that this path on ferry, we need a walking path down there. We need better access. That's horrible right now. This is what, this is one of the things that excited me most about it. Mary mentioned on both sides of the lobster pot. I agree emphatically. It's not safe. I know that there's a family that lives near there that the the wife is is challenged to walk. And anything that adds to that challenge just keeps them home. So this is just, that's one example of hundreds of people, thousands of people that could use this path more safely. So there's a balance here. I don't think it should be a speedway. I, in fact, I will not vote tonight for that. Um, as it is proposed right now, I I'm completely off the table for me. What I would vote for, and again, I'll give credit to Arnold on this one, is some hybrid of this. And I'm okay with the downtown because I think it's, it's a great way for us to do a phased-in approach. Make sure this is appropriate and easily adjusted if it's not. If we dig in a path, that's going to be there forever. We put signs and paint the roads. It's fixable and adjustable if needed, right? If our best efforts are thwarted. Ferry is a little different, I think, because, not because I live there, because this is actually digging up pavement and changing things there. So I think that if we can do some kind of hybrid, and this is where the credit to Arnold goes, is that baller, bollards was what he suggested. Bollards are those things that stick in the ground that, right, that you put there, some the D-mark areas to make sure you don't go into a drive, out of a driveway, this or that way, protect people. Um, we could do some hybrid of a smaller path that would still hit the requirements of the grant. But yet maybe bollards to move people away from the entrances of driveways to give better visibility to both the driver and the cyclist or walker. Um, something that's absolutely in keeping with the uh, I'm gonna quote Halsey Harris off uh ship-shaping in Bristol fashion, I believe, is what his term was. So something that in keeping with that. So I am absolutely, I I think there's a lot of positives here. Um, I think we've addressed some of the concerns and if we can address the concerns moving forward on ferry, lessen the path, it is not a speedway. It should not be a speedway. I won't vote for a speedway. I will vote for a meandering path, a, and so part of the presentation included that feel way too wide, way too speedy, way too inappropriate for the area. So Diane, and maybe if Arnold's on, if we can make those adjustments, and I'm happy to vote um, in favor of this with those caveats addressed and specifically those, and then subsequently the both sides of the lobster pot included. Because I think it's inappropriate to have people stop at the lobster pot. You can go to lobster pot, it's a great place to eat, go ahead and go, but Jeff's a great guy. But you need to be able to continue to walk down that path and not have to negotiate through routes and things that Mary rightly pointed out. So could you speak to that, Diane?
Sure. So um, as to the width and the hybrid, I think what I need to do is reach out to the DEM grant funder and see what in this, I think question was asked earlier, what is the minimum that can still qualify it as a shared use path for the bicycles? And then if we want to do something that's less than that, then we'll have to look at what what the walking path looks like. And then maybe, I'm just throwing this out, maybe we do share the road signs um, for the bikes. I I don't know if we can do uh, if it if it feels too much and it's too much like a pedestrian path, then we'd have to explore, I think, different, a different, a different funding source to do that section of it. And I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. We just may need to find another way to um, to fund that.
So I do, you pointed out rightly, again, that we've been waiting forever for DOT to put sidewalks over there. That is so exciting to me to have clean access over there. It really is exciting. So I think that 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 if we do this right uh, and we make sure that we're sensitive to the the request of the grantor. Um, but yet more sensitive, quite honestly, this has found money. We will not and should not stuff this to Bristol if this is not right for Bristol. But I do believe it is if done correctly. I think we can achieve that. So I don't know what my colleagues think of that, but I would, if it sounds that we have general thoughts of agreement that we want to move forward with this. Um, and I I just wanted to make sure that it, is there objection to what I'm proposing to lessen the impact there and lessen the, I'm gonna call it speed with stripes down the middle and all that craziness. And more of a in keeping with the neighborhood that it is, just like High Street is and the other neighborhoods are. So, anybody get to agree with that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Um, I'm a little confused right now, okay, because I hear what you're saying and what you're requesting of Diane. However, I thought there was going to be part of the design and permitting of the design that will be coming back to us. Uh, I'm not sure. Are you setting some parameters for the design?
That's a great point. Thank you for.
Okay, because otherwise I'm saying, okay, because obviously she's going to need to explore, you know, what are the possibilities, you know, for us to still retain the grant and still accomplish as much as we can of walkability and shit space. So I'm a little.
Clarity, clarity on that would be this, is that I did not want us to summarily approve what's in front of us to then pull back and say, let's go a different direction. So I think it was important to give clarity on that particular part of it. That's the most invasive in the sense of changing existing conditions. Um, so the others are important. I don't want to lessen their importance, but the impact is less in the sense of what's being changed. So for clarity, I'm suggesting that that we give Diane clear guidelines to say, I don't, we, I said, I don't. I'm gonna say, I don't. I don't know what you want. I don't want ten feet. I don't want a speedy path over there. So I don't want her to go forth into that good night, thinking that this is what we want and then come back and say, and I see it, Mary, so just one sec, um, that we, that we say, yes, this is fine, and then say, no, that's not what we want. So I personally would love us to have smaller, more compact, more appropriate for the neighborhood. Does that answer the question?
Uh, well, if I might follow up on that, I mean, I hear you loud and clear there, and I agreed. We should not be going to to the extremes there. And obviously, we need to stay safe for the neighborhood. There is no doubt in my mind, but I I just think, you know, with Diane exploring with some direction, as you pointed out, uh, but exploring then coming back to us, you know, with the designing go, okay, that aligns pretty much with our thinking and aligns with the neighborhood safety.
Perfect. Mary?
I just wanted to uh re- reiterate that point about whether or not they would give a waiver. You said it was eight feet. And right now, the plan is for ten feet.
It's eight to ten feet, yes.
Right.
There are some parts where it will be smaller, yes.
I do think that it would be worth a discussion, or even if we just put it in as a directive to you, if this goes forward, to negotiate with them and see if you, if there's some way to get a waiver by the nature of the road, the historic trees, the tree can, you know, whatever, you you guys can be very persuasive. Um, and, you know, to see if there is a way to even get that down to like seven feet. And no split down the middle, because that looked just, the the rendering that you had was just too much, I think. Um, I agree with Nathan on that. It was just too much, this blacktop. You take this nice sort of country-ish type road, not the traffic part, but the side, you know, the the side of it. And now you've got like this, you know, blacktop with uh stripes down the middle. I don't really think we need that. I think that the neighbors have actually said are in agreement with a with a a walking path or something that is not so big and um, you know, racetrack-ish looking. And also I would say that, you know, the the concern that we really have to address with them, everybody has to be careful backing out of their driveway. Uh, we all do. Um, and crossing any streets and, you know, like, you can look and get it to get out of your car on High Street and there's no biker, and then you get your stuff from the other step seat and there's a bike person, you go like, wow, one second difference, I would have that person uh with my door. So I think we have to be cognizant of the people that are living this every single day. My proposal, uh, if if you don't mind, I know if this would help clear, clarify anything, but like, I would suggest that, um, whatever the motion is, that be added to this is that we explore the narrowest path possible in looking for a waiver. That we uh make it absolutely clear on the council's perspective that there's no lo- loss of parking on any street in the downtown. Um, that would include Hope Street, although we don't have as much say on that. That there is no, nowhere in the future, at least in the immediate future, there is no separate lane, bike lane on High Street. That the council sees the design at at least fifty percent and then approves the final design. And that the pavement, pavement markers and signage be as, you know, obviously, I'm not, I I want to say the, use the word smallest, and I don't mean like tiny little something that you can't see it. But that, you know, be as minimal as possible so that it makes the point that it's a shared road, but it does not take away from the historic nature of the streets um, that we're on. Because you're talking about these not just on High Street, but you're talking about on the side street too, I imagine, correct?
Yes, yes.
You know, we don't need them every ten feet or whatever it is. I mean, that we go the furthest distance and we do them as unobtrusively as possible to still get the point across that it is a shared street. Those would be the things that I would want to see added to whatever the motion is.
Mary, why not make that as the motion and that the council asked or would do when we.
I don't, I don't really, I I I, I've really struggled with this decision and I don't think I really want to make the motion to move forward. I do want to add those to the motion, but I I don't want to.
I think Tim wants to make the motion.
I make attempt here. Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to support the current design for the downtown Ferry Road Network uh, in hybrid model that was proposed tonight with a uh, with the following conditions, that uh Diane and her team at the project fifty percent mark, completion mark would come back to us to a to uh, on their findings on the Ferry Road sidewalk widths that uh you had brought out and Mary had brought out that we want to discuss. And also to uh, discuss with us the safety markers on Ferry Road um, on those. Um, so that's my motion.
Tim, would you also be comfortable adding the other uh concerns that Mary expressed, which was minimal signage, appropriate, but as minimal as possible uh in both size and spacing? But again, appropriate.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Did I skip anything, Mary?
And yeah, yeah, well, the no, uh, clearly that there will be no loss of parking on any of the streets in downtown. Um, and that there'll be no separate bike lane on High Street.
Mary, are you sure you don't want to make this motion?
I'm making an amendment to the motion. Let's put it that way, but we don't have to do a formal amendment process.
Go ahead, Tim.
And my my understanding is that there isn't any loss of parking. So I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily necessary in the motion, but uh, uh, but anyway, that that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that. Discussion.
Well, can I add those amendments or are the?
You can propose those amendments. I I suppose we can.
Which one was on, which one was part of it? Is the narrowest path um on Ferry Road possible to to look for a waiver? It doesn't mean if they say eight feet that we may not, we may have no choice, but I'm just saying, we can, we can try.
All right.
What was that, to investigate? Or what was that?
Yeah, to um, to ha- ask Diane to um, explore with idea, you know, DEM and DOT, whoever, what would be the narrowest um, that we could do and whether or not there's any way to get a waiver because of the nature of the street and the trees, et cetera, for it to be slightly narrower than the eight feet, which is the minimum. The loss of parking, there is no plan uh for a loss of parking, but it doesn't hurt to reiterate that because that is a major concern of people on High Street and on the side streets. Major concern is the parking issue. Um, the other is, is a separate lane. And as we know from places like Blackstone Boulevard and other places in Providence, and I'm sure other places around the country, the separate lane, you know, you still have parking, then you have a separate lane. You you sort of narrowed your your street. Um, and I don't, I would like to see no separate lane for, no separate bike lane um, on High Street in particular uh because of its very busy nature. And then the pavement markings being, you know, a reasonable size that are not, that are, that fit into the character of the historic downtown. you know, a reasonable size that are not, that are, that fit into the character of the historic downtown. And, um, as you said, that, that we see the design at 50% in that we have approval of the final design.
Tim, are you comfortable with those amendments?
Because if not, I'll just do them as a separate, you know, I can do them as a separate.
I, I just, I wanted to check in with Diane. Are these, um, I know we're looking into the sidewalk whiffs and we're looking into the safety markers and we're going to look into the signs. Um, and explore the D O T. Are there, are any of these amendments, um, cause you any concern? We, we obviously don't want to be making motions where we're binding you into a situation.
No, I think though, um, and I just, I need to reach out to the consultant, but I think that it sounds like we might want to do the next level of schematic design and have answers to these questions and come back to you maybe before we're at the 50%. 50% feels a little further ahead of where we might want to be if we can't achieve the goals tonight. And I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves.
Why don't I suggest that no later than 50%?
Perfect. Perfect. I'm thinking like 25% or 30%. So we've got another iteration. I don't want to spend, I don't want to spend a lot of the funding on a pa- on a plan and then come back to it 50% and say, yeah, we really don't like this and we've already.
So no later than 50. Is that?
I'll amend my motion, Mr. Chairman, to no later than 50%, uh, for the project completion.
Anything else? I, I'm going to not ask for any other thing else because we had nothing else there. So we had a motion made by Tim, kind of.
He didn't make the motion.
I think we got a hybrid there.
Yeah, it's seconded by Tony. I am not going to reiterate all this. I think we're all clear, uh, on it. Is there any other discussion?
The question is, does Melissa have it all?
I was just going to, I was just going to ask that. Melissa, are you comfortable with what the motion is?
Yes, I, yes, I am.
And the wonderful thing is this is being recorded. I'm sure she's going to play.
And I just want to say thank you before you vote, just real quick. I want to thank you all for the time that you've taken to deliberate on this and hear from all the, uh, the residents. And I also have to thank my staff. Um, Scott and Ed for the work that they've done and the consultant team. And also we had some good, um, assistance from the police, police department to answer questions from folks on the webinar. So I really want to thank all the other, uh, uh, people who've helped us along the way.
You look like you have an Oscar in your hand right now.
Mike, Mike.
So I, I, and I'm, this is to all of everyone's credit, is that the reason why we take this long on things like this is these are huge decisions that have longstanding consequences. And I don't mean negative consequences. The goal, of course, is to have them outstandingly positive. So this is worth, sometimes it feels a little arduous, but it's certainly worth all of our efforts that was put into this. Um, on the decision-making process. And of course, it's worth saying again, Diane, your team and the consultant team, uh, to bring it to this place. And then also to the public, 12 and a half hours.
Yes.
The public outreach on the 12 and a half hours. So it's outstanding. So, all right. So we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Uh, just very quickly, you've already pointed out to the public, but specifically the folks who reached out to all of us. You know, whether they were in favor or against, but they certainly raised some good, you know, concerns and certain points that to be considered this evening.
Well put. Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none. Mary?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Vote, I, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you again very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See Diane.
Thank you.
Oh, my cue. Sorry. I was waiting for that to keep going. Hang on. The next item on the agenda is agenda, agenda item I one, and this is, um, Charlotte Burnham, 33 Central Street requesting for approval for the creation of a dedicated account to restore the painting of Thomas Shepherd, which was, who was the first school superintendent of Bristol.
I know Charlotte is on the call. Chris, if you could adjust her access. I'm, I'm going to say I know Charlotte was on the call. I should probably look back again. There she is. Okay. So Charlotte, I can see you there. If you could unmute.
Yes.
Look you so much. If you could state your full name and address for the record. Talk to us about what you're looking for.
Okay. I'm Charlotte Burnham. I, uh, live at 33 Central Street in Bristol, Rhode Island. Uh, and the reason I am, uh, on your agenda tonight is because I have been asked to be on the committee for the, uh, with, uh, Isis Bono to restore the painting of the first superintendent of schools uh, in the town of Bristol. Um, the gentleman's name was Thomas Shepherd. He was also, uh, he he was the first superintendent of schools, uh, way back in the 1840s. Um, he, 1849 to 1855, uh, he was the first superintendent of schools. And this painting, uh, belongs to the town of Bristol, uh, and it was built, it was painted by Jane Stewart, I believe, in the 1840s. And, uh, we are trying to restore it so we can hang it up with the other superintendent of schools paintings in the Burnside Building. Uh, we have had, uh, a restoration cost, um, estimate done by Peter Williams of Museum Services. Uh, Peter Williams Service, Peter Williams Company is online at peterwilliams.org if you'd like to look at that. Uh, they have done things for the, for many museums in Boston and they have worked well with, um, Roger Williams University and come highly recommended. Uh, they have estimated the cost of restoring this, uh, about 150-year-old painting, uh, to between 4,500 and 5,500. And what I'm trying to do is get us an account set up with the town so that funds can be raised to, um, uh, address this issue and get this portrait, uh, restored. Um, it would be a shame to lose it. Uh, $500 already has been, uh, promised by the First Congregational Church and I have, uh, spoken with others who are very interested in making a donation to the cause. Um, that, that is the summary of my very quick presentation.
So if I may just add, I know that part of your petition to us included that, uh, if the Charlotte Stewart sounds familiar is, uh, it's the daughter of the famous portrait artist Gilbert Stewart, and we've all seen Gilbert Stewart's birthplace and
Yes.
At in Rhode Island. So this is a, it's a very, uh, important painting. And what Charlotte is asking this council to approve is to set up an account so funds can be, uh, contributed to this. Um, uh, good cause to, uh, to, and, and why through the town is that we do this and have done this. In fact, I'm going to reach out to Charlotte. I'm going to reach out right now. Julie Gosher, our treasurer. I had reached out to her earlier. We do have a few accounts. Hi Julie. Um, we do have a few accounts that are similar to this for uh, similar processes and fundraising, um, for town-owned pieces of property, such and so forth. Um, I think it's important, and I've asked Julie to speak to us about it tonight, is that we have a clear process moving forward on accounts like this. Having no reflection on Charlotte's request and only that it is a request to have an account like this. So Julie,
Yes.
You remember our conversation. Could you share your thoughts on it? And what would our policy moving forward?
Yep. So the town currently manages 98 funds at the last count. So, um, the number is growing. Some of the funds, um, are very, very active. Some of them have short lifespans. Some of them have much longer lifespans. Some of them have really been lying dormant for a long time because there was a cause such as this. You know, not obviously this, but similar many years ago, and not enough funds were raised and the project sort of died. And now we, the town has these donations and is a little bit limited on how they can utilize the funds. So in discussions with, uh, the council chair, we were, um, thinking of that this might be a good time to create a policy. Where we state that we could receive donations, but maybe they would accompany an acknowledgement form from the donor saying that you know, if the funds are not raised within a certain period of time, that the funds will be donated to say the Bristol Art Museum or, or another, you know, another organization, um, something so that the donor is very aware that, that their funds may not be used for this purpose. But it would protect the town from sitting on, you know, funds that, that weren't raised enough for a particular project for, you know, 30 years. So.
Yeah, it's, it's perfect. So in no way am I suggesting that Charlotte is not going to be successful with her venture here. I think she will be. And, but I thought it was important that on a go-forward basis, that when someone gives money and if the town's going to hold it, there should be an expectation that I, I, I think that, and we can do this on a go-forward basis, that human services, for example. We don't have to give it a specific where it's going to go, but if there is money that sits there for more than, for example, four years or three years. That the expectation is, is that, that because the project is going to defunct, that those funds would then be put into our human services fund and we would use that and at the council's discretion on a yearly basis as we do with our budgets. So I didn't want to say yes, or I, I, I believe we're going to say yes this evening to Charlotte without having that on a go-forward basis and that anybody gives money to Charlotte or anyone else, that they know that that is a possibility. A, a, a very small possibility, but a possibility just the same. So. So.
Chairman.
Tony? Yes.
I, I agreed wholeheartedly with you, uh, and Julie is correct. We, we've had similar funds in the past and I'm not sure during the tenure of any of you, but we, we've had a few prior, I can think of at least two most recent projects. Uh, Fred Pacheco was one, Dr. De Silva was another. Um, and, but I agreed wholeheartedly that ultimately, when those funds sit there dormant, it's like, what do you do with them? They've sit there for many years in certain cases. Um, but I, I agreed that there should be some stipulation that if they deal longer than, let's say, three, four, five years max. Uh, then they get diverted into the, uh, human service. I think there will be a great use for those funds and really would support great causes. I, I would agree 100% with that. Uh, with that being said, I would propose that we also, uh, be one of the funders, you know, and, um, allocate a thousand dollars from our contingency to really kick up the, uh, the account.
You are a gracious individual, sir.
That one when you called on Julie, actually.
I wasn't going there, but thank you for going there, Tony. Um, not that I don't want to contribute. So what I believe is that if, if this council agrees with what was talked about, we can make a motion that would say that that, that we would defer to Julie to come up with that policy that speaks to what we just said. And that Charlotte can work directly with Julie, our treasurer, um, to come up with that. Of course, with, I can see the solicitor wanting to give us some input here.
Oh, no, I was just going to suggest that I work with Julie on developing the policy. So that, um, we dot the i's and cross the t's and we'll go forward that way.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. I couldn't agree more. What's this council's pleasure?
Was that, it was, that's Tony's motion?
Was that a motion, Tony?
I thought it was, but.
Is there a second? I heard, actually I heard Mary, so I heard Tony's, uh, motion to approve a policy moving forward, to approve the, the account. And also to contribute 1,000 from council contingency, seconded by Mary. Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Erin Lane. It's, the discussion is, uh, just directed to, uh, the solicitor and Julie and um, you know, just one of the things that's kind of coming to mind that you're probably already thinking of is, um, you know, it seems like maybe if there's the higher ticket value item, it might take a little bit longer to, you know, collect the money for something like that. And so having a uniform time period by which we might make decisions on these accounts and everything like that, might, we might want to stagger those or, or create some kind of tiers or something like that for the amount of money that's involved. I'm just throwing that out there.
That's not a bad, because you're right. Some of these projects are much bigger and I can think of a couple off the top of my head where it wouldn't be reasonable to say you were going to raise the funds in two or three years. But it is something that the council could determine when they're setting up the fund initially. And so part of the policy could be that the council, um, you know, makes that decision at the time that they're, uh, accepting or creating the, the restricted fund.
And I, and I see a lot of value in, in this policy because it actually might, um, behoove some of these organizations to really step up their fundraising and get this done so that they can clear these accounts. So.
And of course, our goal is to have them be successful, to achieve the goal stated, right? So that is what we want to have done. But if it doesn't get that way, the donor has a clear expectation of what's going to happen on their side. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. Mary?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
I also vote I, motion carries. Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you very, very much. That is absolutely marvelous. I will be in touch with the, uh, uh, treasurer tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Charlotte.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is, um, item I two. And this is Harbor Master Marsley and the Town Treasurer Gauscher in regard to the Marina Slip charges.
Mr. Harbor Master?
Good evening. Thanks for the reappointment. Did they know I have a job tomorrow?
You're welcome.
Are we sure we appointed him? Oh, no, no.
We, we record on the meeting. So as we move forward, we're, we're into the, into the final steps here, getting ready for the marina. And I, I know Julie has it in the, the next, uh, the, for the bond. Uh, so we're, what we're looking to do is, as, as we stated in my memo and, and, and I've been talking about the entire time. We want to make sure that the marina is not a burden on the taxpayer, it's on the, on the users of the marina. Uh, right now with the estimated cost of the marina, we're figuring roughly in, in, for the first year at least, that we'll have to go around $60 a foot for the recreational and commercial marine businesses and $44 a foot for the commercial fishermen. I spoke about it at the Harbor Commission meeting the other night. They, they seem to be fine with it. Uh, they didn't give me any objection to it. So I just want to give them ample notice. As we move forward, that their fees are going to change between now and, and, uh, next year's billing cycle. So that's why I had to early.
Greg, so that means, just so we're clear for everyone that's watching and for the council, that means that this change does not affect this year. This would affect next year's way.
Yeah. That's correct, Chairman. Uh, fiscal year '22. So next, next January is billing.
And I know that our next agenda item includes, uh, reimbursement resolution. And it includes some conversation about the marina. This, I, I, I think Greg, you hit it perfectly. This is to make sure that the users of the marina are the ones paying for it and not a burden to the taxpayers.
So that's what we're striving for. But I think, I think we're there right now.
Okay. Counsel?
Uh, Greg, uh, I just had a question in regards to comparing us to the market rate out there. The recreational and the commercial marine business per foot price, we're, we're, we're still quite low. I mean, just to put it in perspective for people who are listening in tonight, right?
We're, we're, we're very, uh, inexpensive comparatively to a private marina. Most of the private marinas right now are running over a hundred dollars a foot. Um, Safe Harbors is buying up every marina and they're charging a ton of money for, for the dock space and, and chasing the fishermen out and stuff. And, and we're, and we're not trying to do that. We want to keep it, we want to keep our robust fishing fleet. We want to get our recreational boats in there where our commercial marine businesses do well. So this, this, this is, this is still well below average.
Great point. Thank you. Tony?
Uh, Greg, uh, just, just to be clear, so the increase in the fees, you gone from 52 to 60, am I correct?
That's correct. For the recreational boaters and commercial marine businesses.
Okay. And 42 to 44 for commercial fishermen?
Commercial fishermen, that's correct.
Okay. All right. I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah.
And you said this was before the, uh, the advisory committee and they did not have an issue with this? No one raised an issue?
No, no one raised an issue the other night at the, the Harbor Commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll remind the council too, that we took this out of ordinance and make this, that's why it's listed this way. Before that, it required first and second reading when there were fee changes. And we've done this with a lot of other, uh, fees, not necessarily with the harbor, but just in, in general town business. So. What's this council's budget?
Yes, your chairman, I make a motion to, um, adopt or approve the dock rates, uh, increases. Uh, recreational going from 52 to $60 per foot, commercial marine business, uh, going to $60 per foot. And commercial fishermen going from 42 to 44 per foot.
Mr. Chairman, I second that.
Motion made by Tim, uh, to approve, seconded by Tony. Motion made by Tim to approve, seconded by Tony. Discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Greg, don't go anywhere. You're still on. So.
Not leaving.
The next item on the agenda is agenda item I three, and this is Town Treasurer Gosher in regard to the reimbursement resolution.
Julie?
Okay, so what you have before you, you have likely seen before, this is a reimbursement resolution which allows the fund to move forward on projects utilizing town funds in advance of borrowing. So as we were just talking about the marina, if we're going to, you know, as we're proceeding forward with that project, a little less than half of this total reimbursement resolution, three point five million, is to start the marina project. So we could, we could go out to bid. We can have the construction administration paid for. We can use our own funds until we get to a place where we're ready to actually bond the project out. Meanwhile, as we're going forward with the Capital Project Commission, as we're getting ready to put the final, you know, price estimates together, all of this will go before the council. So the council will definitely see these projects before we actually borrow the money. So I want to make sure that that's clear as we're looking at these projects. We can take a minute to to finish that thought on the marina, or we can discuss the remaining projects on the list.
Julie, let's stay on the marina since we're on that part of it, and then we'll continue for the rest. Go ahead.
Okay, so we're using three point five million. We have, as as you saw in Greg's memo, the town has about six hundred and twenty thousand or so thousand dollars worth of grants. About a hundred and seven thousand is for the fuel pier and five hundred and seventeen thousand for the marina. So the three point five million, we obviously have not gone out to bid yet. So these are estimates based on design work that has been done. And and so as we get closer to the actual construction and borrowing, we will give the council more firm numbers.
Julie, I'm going to take a moment, and and we just are so used to in Bristol getting grants. We had a long discussion about a bike path grant. We just, we just, you just said we got six hundred thousand dollars. That doesn't come out of the taxpayer dollars to do this. Outstanding job, Greg. I know that you were part of that, Julie. I don't.
I was not, but Diane and Greg, I think.
Diane, outstanding job. That's worth talking about because we were so used to getting grants. The amount of energy that goes into those and the efforts by our department heads to get them is just, it's it's outstanding, and and this council appreciates it. So thank you. Go ahead, Julie.
Okay, some of the other projects that you see on the list are for roads and sidewalks. We're still putting those lists together as the administrator and I are discussing the capital plan, which will be presented alongside the budget this year. The, we have eight hundred thousand dollars of open space acquisition. We had a couple of closings just yesterday on some open space purchases. We have another one on the horizon. We have a million dollars earmarked for public buildings right now. That looks like the majority of that is for the DPW garage. We have some issues with lifts and general design of that garage. I can pause there if you want to speak a little bit more about that.
I do, and I'm going to ask the administrator if he'd like to weigh in. I know our DPW director. Mr. Administrator?
Sure, I'll look. I can comment, and the director, Chris Prellis, here, if you have any, if you're looking for any further details. But if you recall, back in August, we had opened up the bids for the lift replacement, and it was significantly, the bids came in significantly higher. They are nearing an end of life. So we, what we learned is that if we install new lifts or a new system, a different system, it would be significantly cheaper. So from a half million dollars down to like less than a hundred fifty thousand. To be able to do that with these new systems, you need more space. So what we're considering, and Director Preller is working with Director Williamson on on a design, in the most likely in the rear of the DPW facility, where we could have a central garage. And the reason why this is so beneficial to us is not only will it allow new safe lifts, it'll be sprinkled with fire protection, and we're going to have a significant millions of dollars worth of our automated trash equipment that cannot be kept indoors. Currently, it's outdoors, does not fit in our existing facilities. So those are many hydraulic moving parts on those vehicles, and on cold nights, it's been a little bit of a problem. So we want to get those vehicles indoors, and part of the design of this building, and again, this is, it it's a central garage, we're we're talking about concrete and and corrugated steel. But it'll be something that'll it'll be safe and will will keep us efficient with our automated system. So that that's the plan. And again, it would go before the Capital Projects Commission. We anticipate it's going to be over a half million dollars. But we will have no intention of spending more than the the one million requested.
Any questions for the administrator or Director Prella at the moment?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, I think it's a good design. Those those trucks are half a million dollars and protecting them with this new garage, I think, wise, wise investment.
Agreed, agreed.
While while we're talking about the the new equipment, we're going to shortly, we'll be nearing a one year of automation. And from what we're hearing, it it our injuries have dramatically decreased, our insurance claims have dramatically increased. So we'll be, Chris, Director Preller and I have been speaking about it, we'll we'll be coming before you with a presentation on that shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. That's good news to hear that our our the guys, there are guys, right, are safe. So Julie?
Okay, the the remaining projects are drainage. This is for the golf course watershed project, and then we have equipment, which includes some public works trucks and as well as fire rescue, fire vehicle, another automated trash truck. And just as a side, since you mentioned the grants, as I was looking at this list, you know, the both open space purchases yesterday, we had significant grant funding on the golf course watershed study. We have grant funding on. So the town really does an excellent job of leveraging these projects that are on the lists on the five-year capital plan with with grant funds. So it's nice to see.
Thank you. Okay. On, and then the, so, Mr. Administrator, I know you and I spoke about it. Could you just take a quick moment? Julie kind of hit the high level on it. Could you just share a little bit more in regards to the trucks that, Julie, that was the eight hundred and eighty thousand equipment, right? So could you break that down for the council, please?
Yes, I certainly will. So that in the finest director will tell you that that's a shorter borrowing because it's equipment. So what we're looking to do is add one automated truck. We currently have four. All four of those trucks are on the road all day, all day long. So when there is a breakdown, we have no backup vehicle. So it's it's a good idea to get a new replacement in the rotation. So that would be a fifth automated truck, two medium-duty dump trucks, which are crucial during plowing, and vehicles out there on the road. The new rescue is on there. And it was also a SUV for the fire department.
Thank you.
Because that's the deputy chief's fire vehicle.
Thank you. Questions for the administrator? Okay, all right.
It was, on a lighter note, there was a group that's very unhappy with the automation, and it was, the raccoons are happy because they're not getting.
I I don't represent the raccoon, so that's okay with me. All right, so Julie, have we covered the borrowing resolution breakdown?
Yes, we have. So we would just be looking for a motion to adopt the reimbursement resolution in the amount of seven million, six hundred forty thousand.
What's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve it.
Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve the borrowing resolution as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Oh, and thank you, DPW Director Prella. I know you were there, so. He's in mute. Oh.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you, Chairman.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is K one, and this is the report provided by Alan Klepper, the Barrington Director of Bristol County Water Authority with their monthly report for February.
Motion to receive and file, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made by Tim to receive and file, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries.
And then here, I believe we're going to be pulling the HH nine and DD one from the consent agenda.
Yes, so let's start if with HH nine. If you take a moment, I don't know if you've already pulled that. And actually, I'm just going to ask the administrator, because I looked at this and I I had some questions, and I thought he would better explain what this is, why it's in our agenda, and what it means. If you could take a moment, Mr. Administrator.
So Chris Preller, who manages our community development block grants, we had applied for the a lift, an elevator.
Okay, did you mean Chris Vitale?
Vitale, where's that, Preller?
Yeah, because we're looking at him. He's got a cool background. It kind of draws.
Chris Vitale, he applied for a a grant, a very promising grant for a five-stop elevator at Byfield School. Currently, we do have town boards and commissions in there, and a couple of other purposes for our departments. And what we learned recently after the administrators from the community development block grants is that we are ineligible. And we just feels it's, we've been talking about this elevator for some time with the council. But we are ineligible for it, and the reason being is that if it was solely municipal purposes in the building, we would qualify, or if we had solely low to moderate income businesses in there, we would qualify. But at this point in time, because it's a a mixed use, we're ineligible. So we're looking for some other other funding sources. And we're also, Chris Vitale is applying for a another CDVG grant for the Wally School for an elevator.
Okay. I just, I wanted that to be pulled because of that. It was a million-dollar grant, and an important giving access to everyone to the building where it currently isn't that way. So it's something that we should probably focus on now and in the future, and and if there's policy changes that we want to consider, we don't have to, but we can consider. That's a lot of money, and more importantly, it's an important access for everyone. So I just need a receive and file unless there was any discussion on that.
What, Mr. Chairman, is Julie still on? Oh, yes.
She is.
Is there, is there anything that we can tap into from the current bonding that we have or the any finance, any financing available that we can tap into for this?
It was more, Tony, it was free money. That was it. It was.
I I know, but unfortunately, this is actually not the first time that we've been denied because of the schools not always being accessible, unfortunately. You know, so I mean, we 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 shoot for the stars here, but we not haven't been very successful. To no one fault of ours. It's just by the mere setup of the, in the use of the buildings.
It's the, it is the, it's exactly that, Tony. It's well put, is it is the use, the current use of the buildings, how we, the town, have made decisions as is continues to 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 be the challenge in regards to getting that elevator paid by a grant. So but I interrupted Julie. Go ahead, Julie.
So just in answer to your question, we don't currently have any funds on hand available. We've pretty well spent all of our our public building money that we had on hand. There's a lot of demands right now, but as we're going through the five-year capital plan, it's definitely going to be on the list. And so we'll be shuffling projects, and then we'll be discussing that with the council so we can talk about, you know, some options and timing as we go forward.
Thank you.
So may I ask for a receive and file motion?
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion and second to receive and file and discussion? Hearing none. Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries.
So lastly is item on the consent agenda DD one, and this is a citation for Irene Borges.
So I thought this would be fun to end the meeting this way, so I'm going to read it on behalf of all of us. Presented to Irene Borges, a valued resident of the town of Bristol, upon the occasion of her one-hundredth birthday celebration. How neat is that? In making this presentation, the honorable Town Administrator and Honorable Town Council of the Town of Bristol, State of Rhode Island, in accordance with this authority vested in them by the citizens of Bristol, and on behalf of all Bristolians, offer sincerest congratulations to Centarian Centarian. Am I saying that right? Irene, yeah, I got it right. Okay, good. Look, you know, I don't know what it is with clerks, but they like to give us those difficult words on these, right? I don't know.
That one.
And and wishes and many more happy years in the future to share with your family and friends. And this is signed by myself, Administrator Contenti, Mary Prella, Tony Texara, Tim Sweeney, Aaron Lay, and Melissa Cudero, the town clerk. I just wanted to make sure that we were recognizing, I know we all wanted to, our one-hundredth birthday. That's just, that's outstanding. I mean, walk back, right? That would have been nineteen twenty-one, right, or nineteen twenty, right around there. And picture how much the world has changed, right? We're talking on a meeting on Zoom, how much has the world changed, right? So I just thought it was outstanding. So.
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, and then note, we also have Genevieve Marslick will be a hundred and seven on the twenty-seventh of this month.
That is.
A hundred and seven?
A hundred and seven, yes. You heard it correctly.
Just outstanding. So just need a receive and file on DD one, please?
So I'll move.
Second, as long as we can find out Irene's secrets, what it what it took to get there.
I'm sure.
A lot of ice cream and a lot of wine.
I I hope that's the answer, because I am well on my way to a hundred. So. All right, no other discussion? Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Just need a motion to adjourn, everyone.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
We haven't too much fun. Why? No.
I'll take that as a second. All in favor? Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, Paul. Stay safe.